You're all set, go ahead.
Okay, and you have the the flag to put on the screen for?
Yeah, we're all set.
Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Town Council meeting of May 23rd. And we want to begin, Madam Clerk, if we will, with a roll call, please.
Councillors, Beeden Bender.
Here.
Bogan.
President.
Clark. Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
President.
Hebert.
President.
Levec.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
That's 12 present.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll all join in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Sarah has kindly provided us with the flag that's going to go on our screen. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. With liberty. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and transmitted by the town of Barnstable and is being broadcast over Channel 18. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, if anyone is planning to make a video or audio recording or transmit the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair before doing so. Thank you very much. Would like to have a moment of silence now. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we'll open up for public comment. And Sarah, do you have anybody in your queue waiting?
Not for public comment, I have a couple people on for items further on in the agenda that have a public hearing.
Like we lost the President.
I think Paul has been disconnected. Lynn, do we have anybody, or Cindy, do we have anybody for public comment?
No one on the phone, thank you.
Not from me.
Okay, so no council response to public comment. Town Manager Communications, please.
Okay, I'm back.
Oh, you're back. There you are.
I went totally away. So, one thing I have to say, Sarah, is I have, I don't have everybody on the screen for me, so what I need to click on that'll give me all the councillors on screen.
Upper right, you put Speaker View, or excuse me, Gallery View.
Right. Gallery View. All right, I feel better, I see everybody, okay. Excellent, thank you very much.
So, we did not have anybody for public comment, and I've moved to Town Manager Communications.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I have someone for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Maureen, now is your turn to speak.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Maureen Grandmont, I live at 116 Kilcor Drive in Hyannis. And I have a question about the situation with the future of recycling in Barnstable. I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up at this meeting, but anyways, you could tell me if you want me to stop. Since COVID-19 has limited resident participation in this discussion, I'm wondering, I read in the newspaper that the possibility that it's going to end, or there's going to be an increase in fee just for the recycling. I'm wondering if this is an issue that should be put off until the general public is better informed about possible changes and provide input. You know, given the situation like today, there's no public comment. So I guess my question is, is there going to be a decision made about recycling before July when the, you know, the fees are assigned?
Okay, Maureen. Yes.
That's all.
Okay, thank you very, very much, and we'll take that up after, and we'll see if there's any other public comment. Then we will make comment on that, and then also the Assistant Town Manager at Managers Report will most probably bring it back up for discussion, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're most welcome, thanks for calling in, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else, Sarah?
No one else at this time.
Okay, and is Lynn also handling her phone for us?
Yes, and there's no one on the phone.
Okay, thank you very much, Lynn, appreciate that.
Madam Clerk, if we could just note that Councillor Clark has joined the meeting.
Okay, seeing no one else for public comment, we're going to ask for the Town Managers' Communication, and I believe Mr. Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn is going to do that for us.
I apologize, it took me a while to zoom in.
Oh, that's great, welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Town Councillors. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager, I'll be delivering the Town Managers' Communication this evening from Mr. Els. First of all, we'd like to congratulate the Barnstable High School graduating class of 2020 as they participated in a senior swag day today. It was a parade of our seniors in their vehicles and in compliance with our Governor's orders at Barnstable High School to receive their cap, gown, and other items. Over 100 Barnstable Public School staff, along with family and friends, participated. It was a job very well done. Next, Governor Baker announced on May 19th the reopening Massachusetts Plan and advanced us into Phase 1 of this four-phase plan. The plan to reopen the economy safely requires that everyone do their part. We expect most people will be diligent about keeping themselves and their neighbors safe and healthy. Phase 1 of the reopening plan keeps in place existing restrictions, advisories, and guidance, but provides exceptions for certain activities that can resume safely. The new Stay Home, Stay Safer at Home Advisory requests the individual stay home when they can. Please refer to the Governor's reopening plan and orders for additional details, mass.gov/covid19. The town staff continues to provide programs and services while managing this public health and economic situation. We opened our golf courses on May 8th and advanced into Phase 2 of that process. To date, all is proceeding well. We opened Sandy Neck ORV today, and beaches will commence preseason opening this weekend with an official opening date of June 27th of this year. We closed Hathaway's Pond parking area due to concerns regarding public safety and compliance with the Governor's orders and directives. We will further assess that closure in the coming weeks as we move towards our scheduled seasonal beach openings on June 27th to determine if safety concerns can be addressed. We continue to work with our business community to assist in their efforts to reopen. On May 12th, Manager Els submitted a letter to Governor Polito regarding recommendations for legislative changes to support safe and successful reopening of restaurants on Cape Cod and continue similar discussions relative to the recovery phase of this situation on the various committees which he serves. We will keep you advised as we progress to the next phase of the Governor's reopening plan. We are proceeding with a task at hand in the Budget Action Calendar for fiscal year 2021, as scheduled. We submitted the recommended FY 2021 operating budget to the Town Council on May 12th, 2020. We have our first reading of the proposed FY 2021 operating budget this evening with the scheduled second reading on June 4th. The Finance Director will provide the Town Council with a proposed operating budget summary and justification as well later in the agenda. For information on our fiscal year budgets, please view the Town's open budget website at http backslash budget dot townofbarnstable.us, it's on our website. In continuing efforts to provide contactless service, the Town of Barnstable will offer online purchases of transfer station stickers and beach parking permits starting Tuesday, May 26th. In addition to accepting the mail-in applications, Barnstable residents can now conveniently go to permittheats.com, select Barnstable, Mass. in the drop-down menu, identify the permit you wish to apply for, and download all the necessary documents. All online permit sales will be mailed, and please allow up to two weeks for process and mailing. We will keep you advised as we continue our efforts to offer online services. The Town of Barnstable, in partnership with Mass Development and the Downtown Hyannis Community Development Corporation, is pleased to announce 12 grant awards to small storefront businesses and cultural nonprofits in Hyannis's East End impacted by the COVID-19 crisis. A total of $30,000 was made available through the Town's Transformative Development Initiative Partnership, a mass development program for gateway cities designed to accelerate economic growth within focused districts. Small districts in Barnstable, particularly minority, women, veteran, and immigrant-owned, are encouraged to apply for empowerment grants of up to $2,500 for continuing operations during or after COVID through the State Treasurer's Office of Economic Empowerment. Applications will be open until May 29th. I am now going to turn it over to Director Santos, Director of Public Works, to provide a quick update on our comprehensive wastewater management plan.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Councillors. We continue with our Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act process, that's also known as the MEPA process, that's the state permitting that we submit the comprehensive wastewater management plan to. We continue to coordinate with that office very closely through meetings, Zoom meetings, and phone calls. The next step in that process is to prepare and submit an environmental impact report, which we are going to work on this summer and submit hopefully by the end of the summer. And that particular report identifies all of the environmental issues, which are mostly positive, of course, from this project, but still, from a permit perspective, we need to go through this analysis. We continue on the Route 28 East project, that project includes the Finney's Lane Pump Station, the Force Main back to the Water Pollution Control Facility, and gravity sewer on Route 28 from Strawberry Hill Road to Finney's Lane, and on Finney's Lane from McQuackett Lane to Route 28. This is our primary project and ought to be able to install sewers and begin treating businesses and residences in the Finney's Lane and Long Pond areas. We're targeting the fall of '21 for the start of construction for that project. Next project we have continued with is the survey. There's a very significant survey requirement for all these projects, we have to know with very specific detail all the topography and layout of all of the Force Main and secondary piping that will be involved in the project. And the three projects that we're seeking responses from survey consultants include the Long Pond Sewer Expansion Project, the Finney's Lane Sewer Expansion Project, which includes neighborhoods to the east and west side of Finney's Lane, and the Route 28 Centerville and Marson's Mills Project, which is Route 28 from Finney's Lane to Route 149, including the Marson's Mills Wastewater Treatment Plant Conversion Project. We anticipate completion of these surveys in the first quarter of 2021 calendar year. Our in-house design team will use these surveys to prepare preliminary designs, and we will consult, involve consultants in the later phases of final design. We continue designing coordination with Vineyard Wind on the Strawberry Hill Road project. We are participating in additional subsurface utility locations along the project length that will be performed in June and July this summer. Construction of sewer extension on Kids Hill Road, Merchant's Way, and Business Drive in the Industrial Park began on Monday, May 18th and will continue through mid-July. This project, as you may recall, is funded by a MassWorks grant. Kids Hill Road is currently closed for that project and will reopen in approximately two weeks. And we continue the in-house preliminary design of the Phase 1 projects. That concludes my comprehensive wastewater manager plan update for the month of May 2020. Thank you.
Mr. Santos, thank you very, very much. Mr. Santos, if Andy is still with us, whoever would like to respond to to Mrs. Grandmont, please, in regards to the reopening of recycling and in regards to fees. If you could help us with that.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Starting next Tuesday, May 26th, we will be resuming full operation of the transfer station and recycling center, that includes the full seven-day-a-week operation as well as the recycling center for all recyclables. Regarding the fees, we are going to be going before the Board of Health on May 26th, next Tuesday, to discuss changes to our rules and regulations on the solid waste transfer station relative to the provision of free recycling to all residents. We have not finalized what that's going to be, we'll be working on that over the next several months, but the first step in that process is to modify the town regulations, which are Board of Health regulations regarding the solid waste transfer station.
Thank you very much. Has the fee for the the fee for for waste, is that going to remain the same, or is there going to be an increase in that?
The primary sticker price, Mr. President? Yeah, that is going to remain at $250 per year.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Santos, Director of DPW for that information, thank you very much. Any other councillors have questions of Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Clyburn, or DPW Director, Mr. Santos? Councillor Bogan, please.
You're muted.
Yeah. To her specific question, I think you answered it implicitly, but just so it's clear to her, she wanted to ensure that there would be no change in the rate for recycling before July 1st, and as I understand what you just said, that will not happen because it still has to go through the Department or the Board of Health to amend the regulations first.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Schnep, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is directed to our Assistant Town Manager Clyburn. Regarding the opening of our beaches, is there any detail you can provide in terms of the staffing, the facilities, any kind of ground rules that will be put in place either starting this weekend or later in June?
Certainly, I'd be glad to. We are obviously anticipating crowds starting tomorrow. We're following the same timeline where we typically do, where we have basically a soft opening with beaches that are not guarded, but open, or we, as you know, we never closed our beaches. We will have limited staff at Veterans, Countess Craigville, and Sandy Neck, and C Street, basically to facilitate parking, hand out some information on what's been passed down, as far as what's expected at the beaches. But as far as an active enforcement presence out there at those beaches, we are still targeting what we typically do at the end of June when our guards are onboard. We are going ahead and opening up our bathhouses as we typically do this time of year. So those will be open beginning this weekend for weekends only, as we have it every season in the past. There will be some signage there explaining that we are obviously in a health crisis and what is expected of you, and you know, we're optimistic, we're optimistic, we're going to try and make it as close to a normal experience for our residents and visitors as we can. But obviously, there's some challenges there, and we're going to see how it goes. I anticipate Sandy Neck in particular with this weekend's forecast. They opened up the ORV as well. We are not opening up ORV to overnight until the 25th. That was per the Governor's direction on camping, so ORV will be open this weekend, but no overnight stays until the 25th. But I think we're currently positioned about as good as we could be. We've been very engaged with numerous groups from, you know, the county up through the state, various task forces. So it's been quite the process iteratively, going back and forth, but we're very happy with where we landed with basically broad guidance handed down, but not not necessarily heavy-handed, you know, dictatorial-type guidance from the state. I think they all realize that every beach is different, and the local municipalities really need the latitude to enforce as we see fit, so we're optimistic.
Thank you. Have there been any conversation about any restriction of parking in any of our beaches? Or is that just a wait and see if that's a necessary step?
Certainly, so in the drafts up until literally two days ago, we thought that we were going to be restricted to a flat 50%. And some municipalities are going forward with that, but we were happy to find that that guidance was not passed down. It is left open to each individual municipality, depending on the beach, so we're evaluating each and every beach. This soft opening is really going to be a look and seeds, look and tell to see where we need to go. We do have contingency plans in place, if we need to go to 50% or less, I think we may end up landing somewhere in the middle. Not 50%, but if we need to make some adjustments to facilitate easy flow on and off our beaches, we're going to do that. We've had numerous discussions moving forward from, you know, Patty Mischato and her staff to Dan Santos. We've got our supplies on, and we're ready to move, we're ready to really see where we're at this weekend and in a few weeks leading up to our real full opening at the end of June.
Thank you, Andy, and if I could just make one request, given that this is a big weekend, if someone from your office could give us a quick report at the end of the weekend, a paragraph on how it went, that'd be greatly appreciated.
We'll make that happen.
Thank you. Any other councillors?
I see Councillor Clark has a question.
Thank you, and I want to say right now, thank you, I appreciate that Madam Vice President's going to help me to see if you're singling me at all. And if I don't see you and we miss you, please just turn your mic on and speak up, okay? You're not intruding, you have a right to your question, thank you very much. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Councillor President. For Director Dan Santos, can you please give us an overview on where the status is on the drilling for municipal water sources, potential municipal water sources are in the town, thank you very much.
Sure, we have embarked on a process to identify future water supply sources in the town of Barnstable. We identified six locations in that report, which was completed at the end of last year, and since then, we've been doing some preliminary drilling to put some test wells on these sites. And this is part of the process of determining how viable these sites are for the production of water supply through wells, the installation of wells. That work is actually just completed this week, and we will now be evaluating that data to close in on or hone in on what might be the best sites for future water supply.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Beeden Bender.
Hi there, yes, so I don't know if you know, but there's actually a raise and lower hand feature in Zoom that works really well. Anyway, so just wanted to follow up on the beach questions from Councillor Schnep. In particular, I just want to touch on the Long Beach situation because there are two small public lots down there, and it's a narrow road. And there's always a cluster that happens at the end of that road with people turning around, and we've had the Barnstable Police come in and help with traffic mitigation, I mean, we know in August, a couple of years ago, we did a study, and in August, there was something like 13,000 cars that went down that road. So one of the concerns is that, A, congestion, and then the other is, B, you have, when people empty out, there are two ways to get to the beach from there. And just curious if there are any plans to make, one, an egress, one's, what's the opposite, that one's an entry, one's an exit. So just curious if there's going to be any attention to flow there, because on either one of those paths, there's no way you're social distancing if you're passing people, and if it's crowded, it's going to be a crowded pathway with a lot of people in close proximity to one another, so just curious if there's been any discussion regarding that. Thank you.
Yes, so I know that Chief Sullivan has been actively engaged, as recently as this past weekend, with the issues out at that location. I don't have specifics on a particular plan that's going to be put in place in the short term, but we'll certainly continue to work with Chief and our rec staff to address that. And if there's something that we can do better, we'll certainly look at doing it. That's a very similar situation to why we just today pulled the trigger on the Hathaway's Pond. It's just gotten to the point where we cannot manage it with the resources available and ensure safety, so we'll take a hard look at Long Pond as well, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Beeden Bender, thank you for your comment about raising the hand, I'm not the host, and I don't have that feature here, so I'm going to continue to ask people to raise their hands and get excited. Okay, and Councillor Dagwan, I believe you wanted to say something?
Yeah, the Assistant Town Manager just answered it, I wanted to ask about why they were not opening up Hathaway's Pond, and I'm glad that they decided to do that, because I had some concerns about it the other day when I stopped through.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else waving, so thank you very much. I'd like to move on from the discussion with the Town Managers' Communications, and if we could go now into a presentation on the fiscal year 2021 Proposed Operating Budget, and we'll be hearing from Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn and Director Finance, Mr. Mark Mill, please.
So I'm going to defer Mr. the Finance Director, Mr. Mark Mill, is going to take the lead on this for us this evening.
Thank you, Andy. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mark Mill, Director of Finance, good to see you all, I'd like to begin with a message from Town Manager Els of MA regarding the 2021 budget. Managing the implication of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and capital budgets will be unlike any budget in the past. The full extent of the impact on the town revenue will need to be monitored weekly, and the costs associated with reopening our economy is still developing. We will need to maintain flexibility and respond quickly to changing revenue and expense impacts. We have significantly reduced our revenue estimates for fiscal year 2021, and at the same time, attempted to maintain essential programs and services while addressing the involving COVID-19 financial impacts. Revenue collected in fiscal year 2021 will be closely monitored. Revenue collected in fiscal year twenty twenty one will be closely monitored for further contraction. And additional budget reductions may be implemented mid-year if necessary beyond the proposed reductions included in this budget. Fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty one will present some of the most challenging fiscal times in the town, the town of Barnstable has ever managed. Our country is in a health and fiscal crisis that many experts feel will be more protracted than we have faced in the past. This emergency situation has touched every aspect of our lives. Our employees have been given a challenge unlike anything we have ever seen in our lifetimes and their significant efforts are greatly appreciated. The town of Barnstable has remained open for business and made the necessary modifications and assure staff to assure staff and public safety. Concurrent with this new mo- mode of operation, we have managed a health and economic such emergency situation. This concurrent response comes with a significant cost. We anticipate the manner in which we provide programs and services to the community will change dramatically. The need to include these changes in our upcoming fiscal policy and strategic planning discussions is imperative if we are to continue to provide the same level of service in future years. The state, to state we will weather this crisis is not the same as saying we'll, we will be unaffected by it. We must recognize the economic impact pandemic is having on our nation, the region and our town. Like other communities across the nation, we will not be spared the economic consequences of the pandemic. Although we entered this situation in a position of relative financial strength, our resources will be stretched. We expect revenue across the board to constrict over the next twelve to twenty-four month period. And as a result, our reserve funds impacted, our fiscal policies evaluated and programs and services modified as we recover from the situation. While the extent and nature of the economic impacts are not yet fully known, planning for a range of scenarios is underway. There is no doubt that we will need to do more than simply tighten our belts. The proposed budget attempts to protect existing services as much as possible and provide some funding for enhanced services such as esterine monitoring and inspectional services. We are able to achieve this by committing to conservative revenue estimation practices today and maintaining healthy reserves. But the pandemic will challenge us financially. This is one of the reasons for managing financial resources in such a manner. We utilize, we will utilize a reasonable amount of reserves to stabilize our situation. This provides us the opportunity to create a softer landing as we implement strategies to reduce our spending. We pre- re-prioritize our services, provide for unexpected costs and adjust to declining resources and reassess our fiscal policy. On a positive note, we received over twenty-three million dollars to date in CARES Act funding, including a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in additional CDBG program funds, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand to address the impacts on local education, seventeen point nine million for the airport and three point nine million in coronavirus relief aid. In addition, we will be submitting eligible costs to address the COVID nineteen emergency to FEMA, which will provide up to seventy-five percent reimbursement. The fiscal year twenty twenty one operating budget and capital improvements program focuses on essential services, programs and projects and projects in an effort to responsibly provide efficient and effective services for our residents. These budgets align the Town Council's strategic plan goals with the programs and services proposed for the next fiscal year. The Town Council's strategic plan emphasizes the importance of quality of life and strong financial management as priorities for our community. These two principles are at the core of each budget decision we make. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to uh share my screen and provide you um an overview of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty one budget.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So building the revised fiscal year twenty twenty one budget, we were at a point in our budget development for fiscal year twenty one in early March. We we just about completed the draft of the budget. And then the public health emergency was announced on March tenth. And we started questioning whether or not this budget was still good. Um, how would this emergency impact our operations? We had no playbook to go by to to assess our financial situation, how this would impact our financial situation. This emergency situation was not like the Great Recession. Um, it was very different in um in the nature. And so we really did not have that playbook to go by. And so we were gonna be guided by our collective intuition, instinct and a combination of logical rationale in order to come up with a revised budget. So we started looking at each one of our major revenue categories, starting with the tax level. So the pandemic did not affect Proposition Two and a Half. The community is still able to raise property taxes two and a half percent plus a factor for new growth. In our original budget, pre-COVID budget development process, we were estimating a million dollars of new building growth. We cut that by twenty-five percent or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, expecting to budget uh redevelopment to to contract uh in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year that we're in right now. And so we cut that back twenty-five percent, so it was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in the tax levy. Um, we know the state has experienced financial stress. Um, income taxes are significantly down due to uh unemployment increases. And uh sales taxes are down, meals taxes are down. Um, uh taxes are down all over uh the board for the state's position. So we understand currently that the latest information we had is about a four billion dollar revenue deficit and it could grow. And so we cut back state aid uh by six percent or one point two million dollars. We were originally using the governor's budget proposal. Um, but we thought that that was unrealistic, so we reduced the amount of state aid that we were expecting. Um, the House and Senate will probably not pass a a budget until July sometime. So we'll be into our fiscal year before we see what the final state budget is. And then we looked at our excise taxes. Predominantly, these two, this category is made up of rooms taxes and motor vehicle excise taxes. Now, we all know what's happening with the, with the lodging industry is being shut down, so we 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 reduced our estimate for lodging taxes by twenty-five percent. Um, but more be, the good news is motor vehicle excise taxes is we're, we were a million dollars ahead of the game um through the, through the month of February and we still are today. And so we only cut the motor vehicle excise tax estimate by half a million dollars. So combined with the reductions in both rooms taxes and excite, motor vehicle excise taxes, we're looking at almost a million dollars for a ten percent reduction in that category. The charges for services, we know that uh with the closure of uh beaches and just them finally opening up this weekend for a, for a soft opening, we did not expect to sa- to collect the same amount of beach parking revenue and permit sales that we have in the past. And so we cut that back significantly, um thirteen percent. But with the soft opening coming up, we may start seeing more sticker renewals. Um, the next category, fees, licenses and permits, we reduced twenty-three percent, expecting most of the reduction to come in the building permit uh category with a slowdown in construction as a result of the account and the uh the economic impacts of the pandemic. And then in fines and penalties, as you know, the legislation was passed to provide taxpayers relief um to pay uh utility bills and tax bills uh with extended due date and forgive those uh fees and penalties associated with paying any bill late, as long as they pay by June twenty ninth. The town of Barnstable was one of the first communities to adopt uh that that legislation allowing our taxpayers to pay those bills late. So we we expect a reduction in fines and penalties revenues as a result of that. And there may be further relief for taxpayers next fiscal year as well, we'll see. So we conservatively reduced that um by, well, we aggressively reduced that by twenty-three percent for next year. And then in the other category, we know the difficulties that the Steamship Authority is having. Um, and so we reduced our estimated revenue from embarkation fees, we reduced our parking revenue. Um, and we also reduced our investment uh on income estimates. So that category, we we scaled back eleven percent from what we were originally projecting in our pre-COVID budget. So our pre-COVID budget had a revenue estimate of a hundred and seventy-one point four million dollars for the general fund. Post-COVID, we scaled that back to a hundred and sixty-seven point one million or about a four point two million dollar reduction, two and a half percent overall uh from the pre-COVID budget number of a hundred and seventy-one million. Most of the revenue reduction comes in the other categories other than taxes. Property, again, Proposition Two and a Half was not impacted by um the pandemic. So the property taxes are uh are not impacted other than a factor for reduced new growth. Next, we looked at our general fund reserves and and tried to analyze, you know, what would be a reasonable amount of general fund reserves to you to use to balance this budget and still maintain uh a a strong fiscal position going into fiscal year twenty one and twenty-two, recognizing that this could be a protracted event. So we didn't wanna overly use our reserves um with the plan that we would potentially have to tap into those again in fiscal year twenty one mid-year and potentially fiscal year twenty-two. So as this table illustrates, our our last certification of free cash in July one, two thousand and nineteen was fourteen point seven million dollars. Over the past ten years, we have averaged generating about five point one million dollars in reserves. And we anticipate generating about three million dollars in reserves at the end of this fiscal, additional reserves at the end of this fiscal year. Two ways we generate that. Um, actual local receipts coming in higher than estimated and return appropriations. We have frozen uh all vacant positions, um delaying the hiring of and 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 in fiscal year twenty one budget proposal, we've actually deleted some of those positions. Um, so we are expecting some return appropriations that will contribute towards generating that three million dollars. Again, we also, our our motor vehicle revenue estimate for fiscal year twenty was a million dollars less than what we've actually collected to date. So that's gonna generate at least a million dollars of uh surplus of fiscal year twenty. So we expect going into uh when we have our certificate, uh free cash certified again on July one, two thousand and twenty, it should be closer to seventeen million dollars. The Town Council's reserve policy, setting aside four percent of the general fund operating budget um for emergency reserve is six point six million dollars, uh well below what the reserve balance is, leaving an excess over the reserve of eight million dollars. So, but we need to be judicious in how we go forward in spending or using those funds because they don't necessarily regenerate every single year. And you can see um in the third column over, we've averaged about two and a half million dollars a year to balance our operating budget over the past ten years. And you'll see later on that we're gonna use about the same amount to balance the fiscal year twenty one budget. So immediately when the pandemic hit, we implemented some short-term measures to slow the flow of cash going out the door. These aren't complex measures, they're reversible, they're easy to implement, and those were a hiring freeze. We deferred our capital projects and as you know, we significantly reduced our capital program for fiscal year twenty one from thirty-nine million down to twelve million. And we also have reduced our discretionary spending, which should help generate some reserves or unspent appropriations in fiscal year twenty one. As uh Assistant Hot Town Manager Clyburn informed you tonight, we are also um implementing a uh pushing as many licenses and permits as we can online as quickly as we can to start getting money coming into the door. Uh, next Tuesday, we'll have uh parking permits for beaches up and and transfer station stickers as well, and we're working on more. And we continue to actively develop procedures to help reopen our businesses um to get revenue coming in again. Moving into the recovery stage, some of the secondary treatments that we've already started implementing and that we will continue to assess and implement during fiscal year twenty one include multiple uh personnel cost reduction um treatments that we can implement here. Uh, I won't go through every single one, but I listed them out for you and I'll provide you all the these slides uh after the meeting. Um, we also are looking at reducing material and utility and contractor costs using several strategies here. Um, as you know, we've put, uh, we've, we've set up quite a large remote workforce at this point, reducing our footprint in town, town buildings, which should help save energy and in the long run, we may be able to reduce our footprint uh permanently. We also are looking at our capital program spending uh down the road. Um, can we reduce the, our capital, uh scope of our capital investments and can we defer more capital purchases um to again, help stop the flow of cash out the door? And we're looking for ways that we can create more advantageous cash flow as well for things like delaying debt, delaying payments. Uh, one of the payments, we have a a large pension uh assessment coming due on July one of almost eleven million dollars. We're looking to see if we can stagger that payment over a multiple payment period um in fiscal year twenty one so that that much cash doesn't go out the door on July one. Um, again, we continue to consider monetizing assets, but we need to be careful in this type of environment to make sure that, we wanna make sure that we get the adequate value back in that asset if we try to divest ourselves of that. And other strategies include um implementing a short-term borrowing for vehicle and equipment replacement, which we have traditionally paid cash for. So the proposed municipal budget uh post-COVID looks like this. Um, where we have a forty point two million dollar proposed municipal operating budget, which is about two point two percent less than the current approved budget for fiscal year twenty. Some of the significant changes in the budget include deferring hiring for vacant police officer positions, um elimination of two point seven full-time equivalents in the Public Works Department. We are providing additional funding for a deputy building commissioner in the Inspection Services Department. We're reducing seasonal wages and overtime across departments by a hundred and twenty thousand, operating expenses by a hundred and fifty-six thousand across all departments. We are proposing the closing of the West Village's police substation in Marston Smills or or on Route twenty-eight, uh which will uh save about twenty thousand dollars a year. We have about, we've identified a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars savings in fuel and utilities. Uh, we're privatizing our trash collection, which should save us about fifty thousand dollars a year. We are providing again some uh additional funding for lakes and ponds management planning of fifty thousand. And we have, we had quite a bit of turnover, which resulted in a reduction of ninety-two thousand dollars in base salaries for the municipal operations. The proposed education budget is up one point seven million dollars or about two percent. And most of that is in the local school system, uh comprised of one point five million dollars for contractual labor obligations and about a half a million dollars for an increase in the bus contract as well, as well as out-of-district tuition costs. Those are the major increases in the budget. Um, and the proposed other requirements budget is almost level funded, a fifty-two point nine million dollar budget. And we fortunately do, do not see significant increases in this budget other than transfers to other funds, but that they're offset by reductions in other areas. Um, the employee benefits, we do not have a rate increase in health insurance plans this year. And we've been able to continue the migration to less expensive plans for our uh our workforce, which has resulted in about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction overall in the employee benefits budget. Even though we have an increase in the economy retirement assessment, those health insurance savings have offset that. Um, we have bonds expiring on the Barnstable Intermediate School Improvement Project this year, so that saves us about six hundred thousand dollars in debt service. Uh, we are proposing a reduction of two percent to the library grant and a fifty thousand dollar reduction to the tourism grant. We have no snow and ice deficit this year to provide for, which we're very fortunate with mild winter. And the transfers to the HYCC, High Youth and Community Center and Gulf Enterprise Funds are increasing nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. These two operations have been significantly impacted by the public health emergency. As you are aware, they've been closed for for a while, Gulf just reopening. We do anticipate um a significant reduction in revenue and we just, if this, if it continues, we need to provide um additional funding to keep those operations viable. And if those happen to recover in fiscal year twenty one, we can, those funds will be able to be paid back to the general fund in a future year. So the general fund budget, we're looking at a proposed fiscal year twenty one budget with a total sources of funding of a hundred and seventy-five point nine million with total appropriations of a hundred and seventy-eight point eight million, resulting in our need to use two point eight million dollars of uh free cash or general fund reserves in order to balance that budget. Now, how does that compare with previous year? Uh, the fiscal year twenty budget, we used two point five million dollars to balance that operating budget, uh made up of employee benefits, a snow and ice deficit, some municipal operations, school operations and the Town Council Reserve Fund. Pre-COVID, we were looking to use about two point seven million um to balance the general fund operating budget. Post-COVID, we're looking to use slightly more than that, about two point eight million. Um, again, a lot of the change came in the enterprise fund support. We now need to provide them about nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, and we were gonna make a one-time transfer to the Capital Trust Fund pre-COVID, but we're gonna delay that for a year to see how the situation develops um with the public health emergency. with the public health emergency. So we're using about $2.8 million, which is slightly more than what we used, than what we were planning to use pre-COVID, and slightly more than what we used in the fiscal year 2020 budget. And it's within the range that we think we're going to generate in fiscal year 20. So we think what we use to balance the budget fiscal year 21 will be replenished by what we generate when we close the books for fiscal year 20. The proposed enterprise fund budgets are down a collective 4.62%. The biggest impact here is at the airport enterprise fund, almost $1.2 million budget reduction. Most of the reductions, we are centered around the depreciation, the line for depreciation that we had in their budget, which is a, which is a non-cash transaction, a non-cash budgetary expense, but it helps build reserves at the airport enterprise fund. We also expect fuel sales to be down significantly, so we dropped the budget for fuel purchases significantly. As you know, the airport is a recipient of an $18 million CARES Act grant, so that grant will provide them the opportunity to weather the pandemic or the public health emergency over the next four-year period, and they can use those funds to help them through this situation. We do have one full-time equivalent being a reduction in the Gulf Enterprise Fund, which is going down 6%. And we've also reduced expenditures across the board in their operating budget, operating expense budget. We have utility savings and operating cost reductions, and a delay in hiring some positions at the Health and Highness Youth and Community Center, which has resulted in about a 4% reduction in that budget. We are not replacing or repeating capital outlay in the Marina and Sandy Neck Enterprise Funds, which reduced those budgets. We eliminated part-time wages, reducing the PEG Enterprise Fund. The solid waste enterprise fund is actually increasing, and that's a result of the increase in disposal costs for household, for house, municipal solid waste, as well as recycled material. And we have reductions in the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund. Again, that's, those are reductions across the board to the various operating expenses. And we have an increase in the Water Supply Enterprise Fund as a result of an increase in the management contract with the, with the company that we hired to manage that system, as well as the operation and maintenance cost of the MAR treatment facility that is now open and running. Those costs are offset by an anticipated reduction in water purchases from other water districts that we had to make in this year. So to summarize again, the COVID financial, we know, we know, first of all, that operating in this environment is going to be a lot more expensive than, than to provide municipal services than it currently is. So we've been the recipient of several different categories of federal aid under the CARES Act. Again, CDBG, $168,000, with the emphasis being used, used for childcare, food security, and economic opportunities for small businesses. FEMA funding, 75% of eligible expenditures. There's some, some categories that are eligible for the, for the FEMA funding. I didn't list them all, but I provided the ones that are more relevant to us. Again, $777,000 for elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. The school department can use this in fiscal year 20 or 21. They will be applying to use this money in fiscal year 21. And here's a list of some of the types of expenditures that they can use it for. There are more, and I can provide you a complete list if you, if you would like to see that. And then, of course, the airport, 18, almost $18 million in CARES Act airport grant funding. And they can use that, again, over a four-year period for any expenditure, any operating expenditure, payroll, salaries and wages, any operating expense, any, they can, any, any purpose for which they can use airport revenue lawfully, they can use to, they can submit for reimbursement under this grant program. And there's no local match requirement. And it could be used for acquisition as well as development and acquisition projects in addition to operations. So it's, it's pretty extensive and broad as to what they can use that for. And finally, the latest one that we've been notified of as of the end of last week was a $3.9 million coronavirus relief fund. And this fund is, there's a lot of overlap between these grants, between CDBG, FEMA, the school funding. Many of the categories are the same categories from one grant to the other. So the strategy is going to be to submit all of our eligible expenditures to CDBG, FEMA, and the, and the school funding grant before we touch the coronavirus relief fund. And the, the main reason for that is that, as indicated in the bottom bullet here, currently, this fund cannot be a substitute for lost revenue. However, the federal legislation is being discussed that could potentially change this. And that's a, that's a big game changer for, for communities across the country. If you can use this funding as revenue, a substitute for lost revenue, that means we can use it for anything. So we're hoping that, that legislation eventually will, will pass, and we'll have more flexibility as to how we can use this money. We can use it in fiscal year 20 and 21. We're allowed to draw this money down in advance of spending it, so it helps with cash flow. And the application for fiscal year 20 is due June 5. We're going to be working on submitting something soon. This funding could be used, for example, for some of, any, any additional expenditures we may incur waterside to help manage the water, the reopening of the beaches. So we're, we're, again, hopefully, hopefully, this will get changed, and we can use it as a substitute for lost revenue as well. And finally, as we go into fiscal year 2021, and I know Town Manager Els has been talking about revisiting the fiscal policy, and as part of your strategic planning for fiscal year 22, these are the various fiscal policies that we feel are relevant and need to be reviewed with you, and we look forward to reviewing these with you. And they include things like, how much of the general fund resources are being dedicated to the capital program versus our operating budget? Some of the specific designation, designations that we've applied to stiff, specific revenues, do we want to keep those, or do we want to change those? How are we going to allocate resources within the general fund to various operations? Again, that, that's the 60-40 revenue sharing agreement that we currently have between municipal operations and school operations. Any enterprise fund subsidy policies that we may want to visit? Currently, our public works enterprise funds are all self-supporting under our administrative code. All the other ones do not have to be self-supporting. We probably want to review that subsidy policy and see if we need to make any changes to that, as well as the indirect cost model that we use, where we assess some of the general fund support costs to enterprise funds. A cost-to-service recovery policy. Are there certain fees that we want to set so that we collect less than 100% of providing, the cost of providing that service? Or do we want to collect 100% cost? Do we want to set a policy that collects, that sets all of the recovery for fees at 100%? Any newer revised fees? And what is the mechanism that we're going to use to implement those, whether it's town manager authorization or town council authorization? Review our tax levy policy. We've been consistently increasing the tax levy by proposition two and a half limitations every year. Do we want to revisit that, reevaluate that? And finally, reviewing the comprehensive water management plan financing. We need to go back and take a look at that. If there's one area of our operation that has been impacted more than anything, it's the financing plan for that program, because much of the financing was around rooms taxes and meals taxes. Those have been significantly impacted by the public health emergency. And so we'll, we'll need to revisit that. It, it totally is just temporary, but we should, we, there's a lot of other policy decisions around that that we've talked about previously that we need to revisit. So that concludes my comments, Mr. President, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mills, for that great presentation, very informative. I would open that up for more questions. I do remind all of the councilors, if you have not gotten your fiscal year 2021 manual that's well-prepared, you should check in with the town manager's office to make sure that you get a copy of that. And again, it's all also on our website, not only our review, but for that of the public. So Council Cullum has a question for Mr. Mills, please.
Yes, thank you, Mark, for the presentation. I think we were all expecting some drastic, drastic changes there. I wondered how often you plan on updating the forecast? Because, you know, the, it still remains to be seen if we're even going to have a summer here. And if we do have a substantial summer, like if, if things open on June 1st for restaurants, and if Main Street is open to pedestrian traffic, and if there's no rainy days, and if, 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 if the scenario could dramatically change. So I'm wondering what the commitment is on the part of the staff to reevaluate, and how often will we be kept in the loop on?
Yes, so we've developed a weekly cash flow model. We, we went back for the entire fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, and we have a week-to-week cash flow model that we've developed, and we're going to, we were building a projection on a week-to-week basis in fiscal year 21. And we're going to compare actual results to our projections, and keeping a close eye on the bottom line as to what our cash flow is. Cash is king, as we all know. And so we want to make sure that we're going to maintain a positive cash position throughout this particular period. And then there'll be trigger points that will, which we haven't identified yet, but we're working on identifying what those trigger points are that will, that will require us to implement some action, which may, which will most likely be a reduction in a budget someplace. So it's going to be a week-to-week evaluation that we plan on doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Could I have one follow-up, please? Can I just have one follow-up? Thank you. So this is, this is kind of like anecdotal question, I guess, more than anything. I, I just have, I've been reading a lot about the Spanish flu and how that affected people in Armistice Day, and how there was a surge during Armistice Day because people went out without proper face coverings, and blah, blah, blah. I mean, a lot of this depends upon the public's response to the orders given by the governor and the directives for each town and municipality. So, you know, not having all police positions filled is a concern to me. And, and I'll speak to it at the, at the next meeting when we're talking about that particular budget piece. But, you know, I would like to see more community resource officers than ever on the streets in Barnstable, ensuring that our businesses can, can be out and, and producing money and, and being economically viable. Because, you know, there's a, having run a business in this town, there's good and bad things about being in a seasonal economy. And the good thing is, is you always can count on that bailout. You can always count on June, July, and August. And if they can't count on that, then we're really going to see a problem on Main Street. So I think the, the worst place to take money is from the police budget. Because I think we're going to have a lot of, I mean, as evidenced by the tree that was just cut down, that's behind me in my, on my background. We have a lot of people that don't really know what to do with their emotions right now, from financial stress and family stress and people being sick. And it's just an isolation and job loss. I just think it's really important that we have guidance, especially on our Main Street, to help, help people maintain face coverings, maintain the six-foot distance. So I would encourage all councilors to think twice about cutting anything from police budget or anything to do with that sort of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I believe that Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Clyburn, has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to respond to that. While I believe that that cut is in the budget, it was not driven as much by cutting the budget as the budget ended up being reduced because of the availability of academies, et cetera. I absolutely agree with you, and I know Manager Els is fully committed to as many boots on ground as we can get, both CSO and uniformed officers. And we'll certainly follow up on that. I think it was factored into the budget, but I don't think budget drove that cut. It was more of an availability of a police academy getting folks through.
Yeah, I don't think we need necessarily more uniformed police officers carrying weapons as much as we do helpful guidance and watchful eyes, and, and just, you know, more people kind of being the glue between humanity right now, because we are kind of coming a bit unglued, I think. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Snap, please.
Thank you, and thank you, Mark. That was a great presentation, and I imagine we'll be able to get a hard copy or a copy of that, the email. Were we able to create a budget that kept all the contractual agreements in place? All the COLAs, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. All of the, all of our unions are under negotiation right now. And I think as Town Manager Els indicated, that we did not provide any funding for a cost of living allowance in the budget for municipal operations. However, there is one, there is a allowance in the school side of the budget because they had an agreement on the table prior to pre-COVID. So that is in the budget, but there is no, all other contractual obligations, things like merit or step increases for employees that are eligible for step increases are included in the budget.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other councilors' questions? Seeing none, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mills, for that wonderful presentation. Thank you, Mr. Clyburn, for representing the management staff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask Madam Vice President, please, if you could act on the minute.
Yep, I'm, I'm sorry, but Councilor Neary, did you have a question?
No. Yes, I did. I apologize for, for jumping in late. If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, please.
First of all, Mark, I, I think I've said this before, but I commend you for the difficult process in which you're kind of thrown into here. These are certainly unprecedented times. And as I stated, I think prior, budgets are fluid in their nature. And, and I know that this is probably going to go forward literally on a week-by-week basis to determine where revenues are coming from, what the totals are going to be, the whole bit. I am happy to see that most of the budget items that came up are bracketed, right? It's for some reductions in costs. Could you just, can you flip back really quickly to slide number 14 for me? Is that possible? I think it was slide number 14. mo- most of the, of the weighted increase for proposed 2021 certainly comes with a 2.5% override, which is basically property taxes, which will be, you know, derived from, from property owners in the town. That's kind of been an ongoing situation. When it came down to, maybe I'm actually on the, the wrong, oh, the, the one thing that kind of stands out, and I had just a quick question on, was local school operations is showing roughly a 2% increase, again, proposed. And I think you, you broke it out into 1.5 million was contractual obligations, and then another half a million dollars for the bus contract. Are those contractual labor obligations, are they already, has that been negotiated? Is that a done deal, or is that something that, that has not actually been finalized at this point?
I'll have to check with the superintendent of schools to see what stage that's in. I believe they had, they had an agreement on the table, but whether there's an official signature on it, I don't know.
I know that overall townwide, there has been some communication about, you know, we need to kind of hold the line, for lack of a better word. And, and with the increase in revenues over the last half of a decade anyways, these budgets have grown. But we all need to share in, in the, ultimately, it, it's like a checkbook, you know? There's, you know, money in the, in the account, or there isn't. So just because you have a check doesn't mean you can write it, okay? Doesn't mean it's going to clear. So I guess the point being is, I, I am curious whether contractual labor, labor obligations, I get it, a, a deal is a deal if it's done and it's over with, I understand. So that would be my question. And, and I think that stands out amongst all of the other slides that you presented as. that stands out amongst all of the other slides that you presented as an anomaly in terms of dollar. That really was my my comment. And I apologize for jumping in late.
We'll get that answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Mill. Sorry.
Mr. President, I just had a Mr. President just had a comment to follow up on Counselor Neary.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Mark Mill, when when you get that answer for us, I think it also would be helpful if there was a timeline of when this hit in March, and when we started planning as to what was in place at that time, or if those contract negotiations went past that point, and were more recent in being finalized. I think that would be helpful to know a timeline of events on that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Very good. Now I will ask again if Madam Vice President, you could act on the minutes, please.
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May 7, 2020, as presented.
You have a first, you have a second. Madam Quirk, could you do a roll call on that, please?
Certainly. Counselors, Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
That is thirteen yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Quirk. We've now moved to communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, reports, and correspondence and announcements. May I ask the indulgence of counsel to allow for Senator Seer and some of our representatives to speak to us before we go on to more council work. So we welcome Senator Julian Seer, also Representative Procker, I know is here. I don't know if we have Representative Randy Hunt and Representative Tim Whalen. But welcome Senator Seer, please.
Hey, Paul. I think you actually do, or you had all four of us. We were referred to join at 7:30. But this is actually my thirteenth Select Board and Council meet. Well, you're the only council I represent. But the thirteenth one of I've done of these this week. So we're just going to give you a quick update and then get into some questions. What we're really aiming to do is to make sure that you folks are up to date on the efforts we've been leading regionally to try to prepare for and address and respond to arguably the most difficult situation we faced in probably about a century. So as as a delegation, we've really been focused on both saving lives and saving livelihoods. And we've worked hard to speak with one voice. I think we're cautiously optimistic that Cape Cod will have a season that season's going to look very different than anything we've had before. I think we've made a strong case for the as a region for a lot of the unique factors we have, both from a public health perspective and an economic perspective, and the real close partnership among and between this delegation, the close working relationship we have with the Cape Cod Chamber, the support of the county, and then municipal leadership, I think has really made a difference for us. So we formed several weeks ago the Cape Cod Reopening Task Force with the Chamber, the legislative delegation with the Chamber, with the county representatives from Cape Cod Healthcare Participate, Cape Cod National Seashore, other stakeholders and entities, and most importantly, municipal stakeholders, or at least must remain to our conversation tonight. So Mark Ls ably serves on the task force and is a wonderful resource to us. Chief Sonnenbaum, as well, is participating. And we have participation from the Selectman and Counselors Association has several appointees as well. So we've been really working hard to speak with one voice. And now that we have this reopening plan for the governor, you know, as I look at this, I think the real key piece here is that we need a consistent message to the public so they understand the steps they need to take. And that personal responsibility here is going to be really key. How we move from phase one to phase two, and then ultimately phase two to phase three, and then into phase four, is really going to be based on these public health metrics. And and that is going to be based on the surveillance that's going to be indicative of whether or not folks are following the common sense health precautions that the governor has laid out. And we all know these now, right? It's cover your nose and mouth, and you can't be apart from others, washing your hands, frequently washing surfaces secretly, staying apart from others, and then staying home if you're sick and being cognizant of symptoms. So that's really kind of what we're trying to communicate. And municipalities are really key partners here. I'm really mindful of the fact that, you know, most of our seasonal residents, and then especially our visitors, when we ultimately welcome them, they might not necessarily distinguish between Mashpee or Yarmouth or Eastham and Truro. And so it's really important from a public health perspective, and also from a business vitality perspective, that we have consistent uniform information. And so this task force has been working on a number of issues. You'll see it this weekend with guidance the town has already received. Actually, a lot of this was developed because of good work in Barnstable, but around beaches, but around. And so there's a uniform poster that we've put out there. So that's what we're sort of aiming to do. We're really urging towns to really work collaboratively. I think we're concerned about a patchwork approach. This is less of a concern sort of in Barnstable, because you do have such a robust municipal government and wonderful leadership. But I think part of what we wanted to make sure we did this week was get before every single select board across Cape Cod. And actually, this is the last meeting we I think I believe this is the last meeting tonight. So we have been in front of every single town, all fifteen, to make sure that we're communicating and working with and relying on you, our municipal partners here. This is a tremendously difficult time. It's a lot of uncertainty about what the summer is going to be. You know, as someone who grew up in a seasonal restaurant, I'm very concerned about what this is going to be. I'm also optimistic. I think we've done a really good job as a region in sort of pulling together, working consistently. And so we wanted to provide that update. I'm going to turn it over to my friend and your hometown representative, Representative Procker, and then Ray Whalen and Rep Hunt will chime in. But and then we're glad to take questions. But we really want to make sure that we were showing up, engaging with you folks, and making sure that we're having this important conversation to all be pulling together. So, Will?
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Seer, and also President Hebert, for the time to be able to just mention a few things here. I will be brief. I want to echo some of the thoughts of Senator Seer. First of all, I just want to say, before the meeting started, we're starting with some of the other councilors. I got to say, it's it's good to be back. It's good to be back in front of the council. It's good to be seeing what's going on in the local level, because I do miss the the small stuff that's going on, and the much more low lower level communication about the things that are really most important to people. But again, I think I think if we want to see what what's key, what is going to be key this summer, I think it's going to be adaptability. I think we're going to have to do a lot of things on the fly. I think we're going to have to do a lot of things based on new data. I mean, benchmarks have been set, and they may change because of any new data that comes along and any new changes in in what happens as far as the medical community is concerned and and all of that. But, you know, I want to say a few things quickly about the restaurants. It's my opinion that I think the restaurants need to open up as soon as possible. They have the guidelines. The governor gave out the guidelines earlier this week, obviously, as we all know. They all know what to do, what they need now, and what I've said to a couple of other boards and committees that that we see, and many of us see four or five boards and committees daily. But I think what the restaurants, now they have the information, and now they know what they need to do, what they need to get now isn't okay. And they need a little a heads up saying that as of this date, you can open. I think that's what a lot of restaurants that I've spoken to in Hyannis and in Yarmouth are saying, yeah, give us a date, and then give us a little heads up. As of this date, you can open. So they can order the food, they can order the produce, they can order that they can get their staff back and and get up to speed. It was a little difficult for a lot of businesses to be able to to get, all right, as of tomorrow, you can open, you know. I think the business community, particularly the restaurants, need a little bit of a heads up here. As we all know, we have about 12 weeks. These business owners have about 12 weeks to make all the money that they're going to need for the next 40 weeks. So it's a very short season, and it's even gotten shorter because of this. So one of the things that I'm going to continue to do is continue to lobby the Lieutenant Governor and see if we can move whatever mechanism we need to move forward, be able to get what the town wants to get done, which is a streamlining of the process with regard to restaurants, restreamlining the process for getting things approved, streamlining the process with regard to the ABCC. Let's just help out the restaurants. We need to have them survive this, and we need to have them thrive through this. And I think one of the most efficient ways of doing this is through the executive order through through the administration. So I've told the Lieutenant Governor that that I think that this is probably one of the smarter ways to go, is to get this executive order, get the town the tools it needs to have to be able to make the decision it needs to make with regard to getting these restaurants open as soon as they possibly can and in a safe manner. So basically, again, thank you very much for being able to have the time to be able to address the council again. And we we stand for any kind of questioning. I think Tim is Tim's up next, I think.
President Hebert, members of the Town Council in Barnstable, thank you very much for the opportunity. Pardon me for us to come in here and speak to you. I will I will be brief. I promise. So the key thing here that I want to make sure that we understand, when we preface all of our remarks about what we're looking for for reopening restaurants, retail, everything that we're talking about is being done with the utmost top level of safety and completely obeying to all the public health guidelines. Because what we don't want to see is we all know that we don't want to see a rebound of this virus, because we know that that could cause even further calamity. So we have to make sure that we do this right. That being said, I appreciate the open lines of communication that we have with all of our local municipal partners. It's very important for us to listen to you folks in municipal government, because you folks are really at the ground level. In the House, we like to say, oh, we operate at the ground level. No, it's you folks. It's town councilors. It's selectmen. It's selectwomen. It's our municipal officials. We're really at the ground level. So we need to listen to you. So please make sure that you reach out to us with any of your thoughts going forward, as we go through this ever important reopening process. We know how important it is to your town. The town of Barnstable lives and thrives on its small business and on its restaurants. Look at Main Street. Main Street in Hyannis is the heart of Town of Barnstable. And when you go down there, you don't see any box stores. What you see is you see restaurants and you see small retail. We are doing our best to look out for our friends in small retail in, you know, the brick and mortar, as well as restaurants. I've been talking to restaurateurs in my district. I've been talking to small business people in my district, to include that beautiful precinct one in Barnstable that I have a special affinity for. With speaking to the restaurateurs, small business people, we're listening to them, we're hearing them, and we're communicating their thoughts directly to when we have our meetings with the Cape Cod Reopening Task Force, or the Governor's Reopening Advisory Board, or speaking directly to Secretary Caneley, or to the Lieutenant Governor. We know that we can do this. We can do it right. And we can also do it in a way that causes minimal financial impact in the most important season that we have in our calendar, which we're just coming into this coming weekend. But we ask that we keep up these great lines of communication that we've always been able to have with every one of you councilors, and the town administrators at our office, and everyone in in your town. And please, when you hear, when you have concerns, when you hear from your business people, if they have ideas, please bring them to us, so we can elevate them and have them included in the conversation. And with that, I told you I was going to be brief. Hopefully, I lived up to it a little bit, and we're available for any questions you might have. It's great to see everyone, by the way, too. Everybody looks so happy.
Thanks, Tim. So we're glad to take any questions, Mr. President.
I think we lost all. Counselor Neary.
Thank you, Vice President Rap Grissette. Gentlemen, first of all, thank you for dropping in to our little video session here. You are our reps, representatives. You ultimately, you know, carry the weight of the of the of the Cape. I just want to I have a couple concerns and and a couple comments that are actually made about the rules, for lack of a better word. So the rules are social distancing, wear masks, wash your hands, clean surfaces. I'm not bright, but it's been going on for four months. I'm pretty sure that we know where that the rules are, okay? But I can tell you this, if social distancing is the issue with what's going on on the Cape and the economy and to the nation as a whole, okay, why are things like large corporations allowed to open when it's been widely shown that there's all kinds of pushback with people not doing social distancing? Big corporations, big outfits, and I'm not picking, but let's use let me use Home Depot as an example, okay? It's come up multiple times where people might not be wearing masks, people aren't social distancing, okay? Yet, I want to if if there are people that are packing into these stores, and they're buying agricultural products, let's say, let's say they're outside in the flower arrangement, yet enchanted florists on Main Street Stenaville can't open. Now, I'm not that shocked, but is it more difficult to manage the horde, or is it more difficult to manage four, five people coming into a store? It's not right. It makes sense that all these businesses should be open. With respect to Representative Procker, he's right. Open the restaurants. Now, here's the thing. Let's go back to the same thing. Restaurant business is overseen by the Board of Health. The Board of Health, you have to have safe serve safe. All of these things these people have to qualify for, they have to establish that they're doing the job and doing it right, keeping people safe. Okay. We keep talking about opening these things. We keep putting an end date up there on the on the calendar. And it doesn't occur. We have 12 weeks here on Cape Cod. We have businesses. It's not just restaurants. And thank you, Representative Procker, because you're exactly right. You don't give the proprietor the option to handle his own business and say, okay, I know what I have to do. I have to separate. I have to figure out, maybe through the town, maybe we can have needed to get seating on the street to maintain social distance. Maybe we could run reservations through a restaurant so that they can handle the flow of traffic coming in and out of these establishments. But that hasn't even occurred. It's hold on, let's wait, let's figure it out. You know, there's been enough figuring. We have such a short lifespan of economic viability through these small businesses on Cape Cod, and it's universal. We are not Boston. Boston is a is a much more compact, dense area. You can't apply rules from the city of Boston to Cape Cod. Give the local rule, for lack of a better word, the ability to offer some assistance in the form of, let's get back to work. some assistance in the form of, let's get back to work to these businesses. I believe that, I'll use Representative Crocker's example. If we don't get restaurants open by mid-June, there's going to be, they're going to go and they're not coming back. That's jobs, that's tax revenue, that's all the things associated with it. Additionally, hotels, motels. Big hotels have processes in place to sanitize and to all do all these things. But you know what? Again, we don't even give that option to the local smaller hotels and places to reside. And I don't know when this is going to end. We cannot continue to hold off on this. I believe in safety, I don't want anybody to be sick. But we don't even give these small businesses the opportunity to move forward and to run their business. And this is what we need you to go, go up to the hill and and get it, get it. It's got to get done, it's got to get done. We are, we have, we're at the, we're pushing the end of May. We got three weeks here, we have three weeks, three weeks, it has to get done. The numbers have gone down, I get it, you cannot, you, we cannot hold
Yeah, Paul, can you? Entire Cape Excuse me, Paul, can you, can you, can you just, I'm sorry, can you just summarize the question? I totally hear you, I agree with you. I want to make sure we get some questions. Thank you.
Okay, okay. What is the rationale for opening larger businesses, okay, in operations and keeping the small ones shut? That's my first question, okay?
I'll take that one, Paul. I have, and I I I know I can speak, so I've spoken with the Senator and I spoke with the other reps about this too. We agree with you. We're still trying to figure out what the rationale is as well. I wonder why it is that I can walk into Home Depot, which I've walked in there several times. And I can't walk into one of the merchants down on Main Street in Hyannis. But I'll give you an example where we remember about a week and a half ago when those drafts, proposed beach regulation things came out.
Yes.
We, when we saw that, we didn't even know that that this was being done. We didn't even know that these draft things existed until I opened up the Cape Cod Times the next day. We took a look at it and by the end of that day, based on what we read, we were already talking with the Secretary as a delegation. We're talking with the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And when they were talking originally about 50% parking capacity, basically putting a cone on every other spot. I remember the conversation, myself and other members of the delegation, and speaking with her, I said, well, I just went to Stop and Shop at Patriot Square and we weren't doing that there. So why are we going to do this to the towns? Why don't we let the towns, you know, formulate their plans and give them the freedom to do it? And bang, it ended up being in there, okay? So, no, no, no sweat there, Paul. But the other components of the reopening plan, we didn't see until it was released to us, I think like 20 minutes before the press con.
Sure.
So we saw that we're working together with the chamber, the Senators leading the charge with us in the delegation, him and Rep. Peak on this. Again, there are things in there that we are in disagreement with. And we're trying to make sure that Boston's not looking at it as a one size fits all approach to what we have down here in the Commonwealth. We have unique needs down here because of the timeline that we're under. And we're screaming that from the mountaintops right now, Paul. But at the end of the day, we're not the ones that make that decision. But I can tell you that we're going to get some substantive, safe change done that's that's appropriate for our region. Or we're going to damn near die trying. So I can guarantee you that. So thank you for your question and we agree with you.
Well said, Tim, thank you. Are there other questions from councillors?
I believe Councilor Dagewan has a question. Councilor Dagewan? Councilor Dagewan?
Coming, it's coming, just takes a minute to
Thank you.
I'm also, thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to say thank you to the state delegation that that joined us tonight to answer some questions. And because a lot of times we're we're asked questions as councillors and don't quite know what to tell some of our constituents. I have two questions. One is an example has come up about the shelters that are here. And I find that there, one shelter is doing a great job of, you know, social distancing, keeping people inside the shelter, that's part of their policies. I find other shelters where I know of one or two particular who have put two people in a room. And neither has been tested. And so I, some of the employees are concerned about that, that, you know. And I think they would like to be able to call somebody and ask, is that appropriate, is it not appropriate? They are allowed, you know, the employees are asked to wear masks and, you know, do what, wash the hand washing and, you know, the social distancing, that's fine. But when you're working in a shelter and they bring in someone and put two people in a room that nobody knows whether they've been tested or not. And some shelters are getting there, I know the homeless shelters, they they are being tested. And if they fail or are negative, they do, they go one place. And if they're positive, then they're allowed to stay at that shelter if they agree to go along with the policies. So that is my question on that. And the other question would be when people get, are told that, okay, you can open up. Is there anybody that they have to report to to give their plan? Their preventative plans to say, this is what we're going to do? And is there anybody monitoring that?
Yep.
Because I do see places where people don't have a mask on. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, Deb. So on the homelessness piece, I'm actually really proud of what we were able to do for the homeless population in the mid-Cape. This is something that not a lot of places did what we were able to do and and a lot of people made that happen, including the town. Specific to your concerns, it might be easier, Deb, if you just want to follow up with me offline about the basic facility and we can connect them with folks to talk to. So about how this is going to be sort of enforced, right? These questions around enforcement. The way it's structured is it's really on the business to comply with the recommendations. So there's three things we're asking, governors asking folks to do and we're asking, we're all in this together, right? So that's why we're here. As Tim was saying earlier, you know, this isn't, this isn't our real, you know, this is, we didn't create this reopening plan, but it's the reopening plan we're living under. We're trying to get some things changed, but we also want to make sure there's a consistent message to the public. So there's three things, there's the social, the the social guidance, right? You know, social distancing, all the stuff we're practicing. Then there's broads, safety protocols that all businesses have to adhere to. And there's sector specific protocols and plans. And you can find all of that at mass.gov/reopening. Every business is going to be required to do their own COVID, COVID-19 control plan. But how they're sort of, businesses are essentially required to self-certify. So they'll have to make an attestation that they post publicly at their business that they have taken all these steps. So it's not a, they don't have to get get sort of approval from an entity to begin to open. If we did it that way, you know, I mean, we just have limited resources, particularly in the local health space. You know, it it'd be September before anyone could open. We don't want that at all. So we're using a, an attestation, that's how it's being used. And then the enforcement piece, that's, you know, that falls at the local level, the local Board of Health and then also the Department of Public Health, Division of Labor Standards. But it's going to be based on a reporting based system. So I actually think this makes good sense, right? It's allowing people to open up, you know, as soon as they can prepare and get ready. And then if there's any questions or problems, that can be resolved later, hopefully there isn't. I would also just say another key piece in the reopening and a critique I have, but one I think we're working to change, is that businesses need some lead time to prepare, right? And if you're a restaurant, you know, if you're told on June 8th that you can open on June 8th, well, you know, you you need at least five days of a lead time to not only deal with all these COVID-19 control plans and other things if you create, you're changing all your systems, but you also got to order food. And so one message we've been really trying to push is that, particularly in the hospitality space. And but in all these spaces, our businesses need a heads up and 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 some lead time. And I think a lot of the frustration I'm hearing, and I think it's very legitimate, is that people are unable to plan. You know, right now, we're going on, all right, we're in phase one, phase one's going to be a minimum of three weeks, so hopefully that means June 8th. It's really frustrating, so that's what we've been aiming to do. I also should mention, there's a working group that's been established to focus explicitly on restaurants, accommodations and tourism. Wendy North Cross serves on that. This is, this is consulting with the Governor's Reopening Advisory Board, the entity that basically created this plan and these rules. So there's a lot in progress, particularly to get this hospitality sector right. I don't think we have yet, but we're working on it.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to follow up on that real quick. My understanding is that, and and I think that most people are going, are doing the right thing. And because they want to. But I am concerned, the understanding I'm getting from you is if you see that some business or some individual, or I say a business, is not doing what they're supposed to do, we we should report this to someone in our town.
Yep.
And I also want to ask if, okay, thank you. I also wanted to ask about, I want to ask you one other thing about these businesses or organizations or whatever, if they need assistance in coming up with some ideas. I think a lot of these restaurants and others have come up with some great ideas, they've been very innovative and creative. But I think there are other little businesses that may want some help. Is there someone they can contact to get?
Yes, I love this question. So that's the whole point of this task force, right? Is that we're trying to pool our resources and provide real guidance and information to, you know, to to businesses, to employees, to the public, right? So, you know, we've got 15 municipalities, we've got a county, we've got a whole mess of letters that are officials, we've got different chambers. If we all pool our resources, we're going to be able to help people. And so there's really three pillars in what the task force is doing. There's the messaging, particularly after the public, and advocating for the region. And then there's the technical assistance to businesses and technical assistance to towns. The county's been really key there and municipal partnerships have been really key there. If you're a small business, you know, and most of the, most of the businesses I'm talking to are already sort of planning this and and trying to figure it out. But go to mass.gov/reopening, look at the model, you know, the sample COVID-19 control plan. Reach out to your town and have conversations, look, there's going to be a whole website with resources on that. There's model guidance that's coming out, so all this is being worked on and coming out, if it is available already. So that's really the aim, to try to help and pool resources.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you. Madam Vice President.
I love your glasses, Deb.
I thank you, I'd like to thank each of you for attending tonight. I just want to make sure, and this is something I wanted to ask for Andy. I want to make sure that the delegation has been made aware of the letter that was sent by the town manager to Lieutenant Governor Polito outlining some some proposals for restaurants and relaxing some regulations. And I want to make sure, Andy, that that's been put forth to the delegation.
Yes, we have it, it's fantastic. And Mark Ellis has been a godsend through this whole process.
And because Mark's not here, I'm sure he would want to make sure that you're aware of those, which I know were drafted with, in in concert with, you know, you as well. But I want to make sure that that gets pushed through to the Lieutenant Governor.
It has.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you. So thank you all for for being part of this meeting and sharing what's going on at the state level. I did want to make a couple of comments that I know won't be totally unfamiliar to you. So, you know, we all, we all are in agreement on how critical our small businesses are to our economy. We're a very different kind of place, you know, and and our main streets and and offshoots of those are are really the critical drivers to what happens here. That said, as you know, a lot of these businesses have been left behind by the federal programs, whether it's PPP, EIDL. And and they are, they are struggling financially without any support. So, you know, I know that the state is facing a huge budget shortfall. That said, there is a billion dollars of a supplemental budget that's heading heading to the legislature. That I would, I would really hope that our delegation would do whatever they can to earmark some funds to help support our small businesses. So for example, you know, relief grants to help businesses cover rent mortgages and other fixed costs. You know, money to help support community development, financial institutions that help small businesses with grants and zero low interest loans. Money for mass growth capital corporation, you know, in in, you know, if if you could somehow sequester maybe $150 million out of that billion to send towards small business relief, Vermont just did it yesterday, they earmarked 400 million. They have a state of of a population of 600,000 people. It's it's smaller than Boston and they were able to pull off 400 million. So I'm just, I'm really pleading with you to do what you can to look at that billion dollars and sequester some of that money to help our small businesses on on the Cape and and throughout the Commonwealth, quite frankly. So thank you.
Yeah, that that's critical. I think the challenge we're facing, right? And this is why the federal support of states and and localities is so important. The Commonwealth is facing a $5 billion, estimated $5 billion revenue gap, FY '21, that starts July 1st. That's just for context, that revenue gap is double what the gap was during the Great Recession. So we're basically talking about double of cuts of what we faced in the Great Recession. And so every program and investment that is so critical now, right now is that this is the time where, you know, all all economists of of any decent training are telling us we need to be investing and making sure that we're propping up a whole host of activities, including small business. We can't run a deficit in the Commonwealth. And so this is really going to, you know, rely on federal government and the support. I'm optimistic that the the billion dollar sub budget that was filed by the governor is largely based on on reimbursements of federal dollars. So basically we can recoup that money. And there are some opportunities there to really go to bat on the small business issues. I'm really curious to see how Vermont kind of finagled this because my hunch is if they were able to set aside such a large amount of money for small business that it probably was tied to some federal dollars, I want to find that out. So we're pushing for that and a whole list of other things. I just want to really level and be honest that like, without federal support, none of this is, none of this is going to happen. Even the town, you you are going to see a 30% cut in your local aid, you're going to see cuts in Chapter 70. We're going to cut every kind of, every program imaginable, probably by at least 10%, if not more. And that is just going to, one, really hurt the public health and safety assets that have been responding to this. And then two, just further hamper our economy. And so that's why this ongoing support is so crucial and so important. And, you know, if there's a way we can figure this out with some federal money sooner, like, I'm game and I want to go to bat for that. The programs you're talking about, Brett, I mean, these are, these are near and dear to me. I gave my maiden speech in the Senate, actually, on these small business technical assistance programs. So, you know, if we can do it, we're fighting like hell to do it. But I want to be just honest about the fiscal environment that we're in and without support from the federal government, we're not going to be able to help keep a whole host of things afloat, which is just going to make this all the more worse.
Well, if I could just kind of add on to what Senator Sears is saying, yes, we're, what we're going to need is a whole lot of help from the federal government to fill in some of these gaps, the billion dollar gaps that we're going to have. Because we do have a rainy day fund, but as the Speaker was saying earlier today, I believe, and the Governor, I think also is echoing the same thing, is that we can't take the entire rainy day fund and put it towards this deficit. Because what that does, as many people know in finance, is that if you deplete your rainy day fund, that really does impact your ability to borrow. So there still needs to be some of that left in the rainy day fund to be able to maintain a bond rating for the state. So as as Senator Sears is saying, those federal funds are going to be key, be able to finance all of these other programs that are going to be seeing severe cuts because of the lack of revenue.
Thank you very much. Counselor Starr has a comment. Counselor Starr, please.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to thank the delegation for coming and all their work with the task force. And I know that there are some bills, there's a bill in the Senate and the House, bills to move it forward with the, lower, with the ABCC, with lowering how much, usually to change things for a restaurant. It takes two or three months of licensing, and it'd be nice to be able to speed that up. I know there are bills going through, but it'd be nice to, maybe the Governor could step in with an executive order and speed that up and give that ability to the towns to move those forward. Two weeks is a long time here. We're talking, you know, Julian's talking about, you know, restaurants need lead time. They need a specific date they're gonna open, but they also need time before that. And if we wait two weeks for it to go through the House and the Senate, it might be, it's a long time. So.
And two weeks would be fast for us. Tim's our expert on this issue, Gordon, but yeah, we're on it. The executive order would be the fastest route, but Tim's been really working on it. I don't know if you want to elaborate, Tim?
So we've been working locally with ABCC, our local investigators, Jamie Benand, there's our local investigator down here, as well as Ralph Sacramone, who's the chief legal counsel for the ABCC. So we've been working with them, as well as House and Senate leadership. And I have high hopes we're gonna be able to get something done very soon. It was brought up by House leadership, I believe it was yesterday or today, this specific thing, this specific topic. And it also doesn't hurt that the Chair of the House Ways and Means represents the North End of Boston. And that's an area that is screaming for this as well. So it has statewide attention from some of the top people in leadership in both chambers.
Okay, yeah, because we have a lot of restaurants who want to move outdoors, who want to move to the sidewalks, and they can't serve liquor, you know. And that's their question. So how's it all gonna work? Okay, thank you.
Right on.
I see Counselor Cullen has a question.
All right, well, you folks, okay, this is gonna, I think this is gonna have to be the last question. You folks have been really generous with your time, and I know you have a packed agenda ahead, so last question to Jen.
Hi, thank you for coming, for sharing your thoughts.
You bet.
I have a question that's kind of low-hanging fruit, I think, at this point. But, you know, I was very hopeful when the Governor put the order out that all, that face masks must be worn. You can't guarantee six feet of distance. So I'm wondering why we can't allow some smaller retail to open with face mask requirements? Like, it just makes no sense to me that, like, you know, Main Street can't open the little shops on Main Street. I won't mention anybody for fear of leaving people out. But I don't understand why, if we can be in a small space buying produce with masks on, that we can't be in a small space in retail. And I will say that, having owned a business on Cape Cod, we do wait for the summer, absolutely. But Memorial Day is just a harbinger of things to come, and then you have a three-week lull. You really have a three-week lull, where you are sending staff home early, nobody's making any money, and it's not until school gets out, although who knows what's gonna happen this year, because there's no school, right? It's not until school gets out where it really hits. So this year might be completely different because of that, I don't know. But I'm just wondering if you could do something, laxing the small retail thing, because at least get that off the ground, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, like you, Jen, this doesn't make good sense to me either, right? I mean, it's not what the rules of the road are right now. Retail is able to open May 25th for curbside, and what we're trying to do is to really make the case that we need to go further on it. So I agree with you 100%. I don't understand, I actually have some thoughts on why, I know this process has been a little skewed from a corporate perspective, but I think we're advocating for that and we're going to bat for it. I, you know, I'm glad that retail can start doing curbside, starting on the 25th. But really, this is something that I really think we can manage, and hopefully we're gonna get a course correction here. Because it just doesn't make good sense, particularly given the inequity. You know, if you're a large corporate entity, you've been able to be counted as essential business. And if you're a small mom-and-pop shop, you haven't. It just, it doesn't seem to bear out, even from a public health perspective. But I know, Will, you want to chime in too?
We're leaning so heavily on the mask being the savior in the situation. Okay, I'll bite, I'll bite, that's right. Yes, everybody wear a mask. Now let me go to shop Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, I could see with, like, different occupancy levels, but go ahead, Will.
As a Counselor Cullen, I agree with you 100% on this. There's no reason why, one of the things that I was talking with one of those shopkeepers in Centerville about, curbside pickup is fine, however, if we are in any other store buying produce, as you say, with our masks on and attempting to socially distance as much as you possibly can, what is to stop a small gift shop or whatever you're speaking about to be able to have appointments? You know how many people you can socially distance in your square footage? I can handle two or three people an hour, whatever, set up appointments. If you want to come in, set up an appointment. I mean, I think that is, that's another step forward past the curbside pickup. Be able to allow people into your store two or three at a time, depending on how you can socially distance those people. Another step forward that I think is gonna ultimately, I think, possibly save a lot of these small stores.
Well, thank you again for having us. We really appreciate the time. Rely on us as you always do. Please follow up. I know there's a lot of unanswered questions here and things we're figuring out. We really appreciate your time. We will continue to keep in good touch with all of you and really appreciate the outstanding work, really, that Mark and his whole team have done for the Town of Barnstable. And this has been, this is very, very tough. We're gonna keep at it, and again, cautiously optimistic about what we'll be able to do. And so thank you so much and enjoy the long weekend this fall.
Thank you very much. Julian, Will, and Tim, thank you for your patience. I know it was a long wait for you, and thanks for coming over, and be safe yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and the same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to, we're not taking a break. If you need to take care of any issues, you do so on your own, because of the time, I want to keep us moving at this point. We're going to go back now to communications from counselors, please.
Counselor Levesque.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you to DPW and on the continued work on the Marston's Mills Village project throughout the crisis. The raised crosswalks look great. I really appreciate the stop sign being left there at the end of Cash Market. And I just want to petition that we can still keep that going, that would be great, and just leaving it there. It's a very safe, oh, can't speak tonight, intersection, and I'd like to keep it that way. Also, too, right into Marston's Mills today, just want to give a shout out to the Morning Glory Cafe. They are open for takeout, and, of course, important for, because it is a small store that if there's some curbside pickup, but if you walk in, make sure you're wearing a mask and practice social distancing. So Morning Glory Cafe is open in the Mills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dagwana, I see.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to all those seniors who graduated. I know Paul spoke a little bit about it earlier, but I participated in somewhat of what you call a drive-through for a couple of seniors decorated my car, parent called, announced, and we, these were college graduates. And, you know, and, you know, I just think that it was such an eye-opening experience for me. But I understand how disheartening that has to be. You've gone to college for four years, you've got that degree. And I think a lot of this was for the parents who had worked so hard and were looking for that opportunity to go through the graduation and, you know, and the student to, you know, walk across that stage. And so people being very creative as they have to create these little ways of recognizing that. And I hope that they will continue to do it, you know, continue to do it safely.
Thank you very much. I believe Counselor Bogan had a question? Comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Consistent with earlier discussion, I did want to announce that the Osterfield Business and Professional Association is going to be holding a spring into summer Sales Day on Saturday, June 6th. They're encouraging local businesses and offices in the village to encourage shopping on the sidewalks with displays, et cetera. They will not be sending out any brochures, but folks can follow any developments on their Facebook page. So that's Saturday, June 6th.
Thank you very much. I'm just, because I am still the liaison for the Disability Commission, and I don't believe that our DPW is still with us. But they did want to give out a shout out to the lining that was taking place at Craigville Beach when they put the new asphalt, they put the safety guidelines for handicap parking, and they did a great job, and they thank them for that. And also to let all the counselors know that at the polling place at St. George's Greek Orthodox Church, the Disability Commission is working to get more handicap parking spaces there, because we do use that for our polling. I also would like to report that, as a liaison to the Human Services Committee, that a part of their four-page report has the number one priority right now of trying to secure more food banks, to make sure that the food banks are prepared for. They've done a great job with the COVID, and they're looking in the future to make sure that those grow and are well cared for. Thank you very much. I see Counselor Clark, please. Counselor Clark.
You're muted, Chris. You're muted.
Chris, you're muted.
Counselor, Counselor, Counselor President Hebert. I do recognize that as I approach the senior center today and try to approach my meals on wheels, I saw that there was a very big traffic jam over, traffic over the counselor, over the counselors who were, I'm sorry, celebrating the Town of Barnstable, counselors, Town of Barnstable graduations. I salute them all at their events, and I appreciate that they are appreciating to advance towards their next advanced graduation presentations, and I appreciate that they have been suggested at the, that they have been saluted at the Town Council, at the Town Managers and the Town Council, at their Town Town, the graduations such as scheduling graduation, at the Town Graduation Situation at their, 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 their their designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors for communications? Seeing none, of closed communications? Are we good? I'm not seeing anybody else signaling. So we're gonna close communications, and we'll go on to the orders of the day. Okay.
Mr. President, I think we were gonna have a committee report on short-term rentals. The Counselor Schnepp is gonna present that.
Okay, yes, I was kind of waiting for that, but it's not listed separate. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, committee report on short-term rentals and possible discussion of next steps. I'm very, very sorry. So Counselor Schnepp, please, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Zoning and Regulatory Committee, which is a committee of the Town Council, met last Thursday, May 14th, to continue our discussion of draft regulations for short-term rental properties. The committee had reviewed these draft proposals last on March 5th, and we also had a workshop in front of the Town Council of those draft regulations at that time. Since March 5th and our experience with COVID issues, budgetary concerns, we have to revisit those draft regulations and have made a few changes to those regulations. And I'd like to just briefly go over that for your information and then suggest next steps for the councils to review this. If you'll, at first, I wanted to make sure that everyone remembers who is on our committee. I chair that committee with Counselor Barrett Beedenbender, Counselor Cullen, Counselor Clark. Staff has been very helpful in drafting these regulations and incorporating the concerns that we have brought up. As you are all well aware of, this is a very hot topic in the community, the short-term rental regulations. And I'm sure many of you have received communication regarding, you know, what we have proposed and some of the things that people would like to see changed. And at every meeting, I have encouraged public comment, and that if that comment doesn't occur during a meeting, that people are always free to write or call the council members. So just to quickly go over what the proposed changes are. The biggest one is that the draft regulations that you have seen today included both a general ordinance and a zoning ordinance. In the general ordinance, we had a provision to license short-term rentals. And for reasons, again, mostly driven by budget, we have changed that designation from a licensure to a registration. In effect, it doesn't have, make that much difference, but there is less emphasis initially on inspections of the short-term rentals. We also added a definition into the regulations regarding cottage colonies, primarily to exclude them from the definition of short-term rental regulations. Other than that, we have really pretty much maintained the draft regulations that you reviewed back in March. We have kept a limit on the number of units, short-term rental units that can be owned to two. Obviously, there's some definitions of what an owner means and that implication. And we're allowing, or we're proposing to allow anything, any short-term rentals that have been registered prior to April 30th, 2020 to be included. So that could be, someone who already has more than two could retain those in ownership. For compliance, as part of the registration, the owner or operator has to sign an affidavit testing to a number of requirements that have been put into these draft regulations. I would like to reserve any further discussion of the regulations to a larger presentation that can be made by staff. The proposed calendar for moving this forward would involve a first reading by the Town Council at our next meeting, which would be June 4th. And that would be the time that we would have a little more fulsome presentation by staff and the committee, if they would like to add comments. The first reading is a referral to Planning Board. So that would, so the only action that the Town Council would take on June 4th would be that referral. The earliest date that the Planning Board could meet, because there are The earliest date that the Planning Board could meet, because there are notification or advertising requirements of 14 days, would be on Monday, June 22nd. So that would be the first, the next time that the regulations would be reviewed. The Planning Board ultimately only makes a recommendation on the zoning ordinance piece, but we want to send both the general ordinance and the zoning regulations so that everything can be reviewed in context. After that, assuming the Planning Board makes its recommendations that evening, they could refer it back to our next, what would be our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which would not be till July 16th. Now, it's possible that the Planning Board could continue their discussion, so that might delay it moving to, back to the council. But at the earliest, these would come before the council for deliberation in mid-July. And if I have messed that up, if any staff is present and wants to correct me, that would be fine. Other than that, I think that's about all I want to report out tonight. If anyone has any specific questions they want to answer, have answered tonight, that's fine, but otherwise, we would be moving this to the agenda for our June 4th meeting.
Thank you very, very much for that report. Much appreciated. Chris, can Counselor Clark hear me? We're going to take a two-minute break right now. We're checking on Counselor Clark.
Yeah, she stepped away.
She stepped away?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, I'm calling her right now, if you give me one minute, okay?
Anne, did you have a question?
I'm just going to take those two minutes. I'll be right back.
You're all set, go ahead.
I thank you very much. So it will be, if you can all hit your cameras again, if you're back, I'd appreciate it.
Not yet, but you have quorum.
We have quorum.
Okay, we're going to start again. So I did talk to Chris's husband, Len, and he said that she was dizzy. She obviously looked a little puffy to me and was having difficulty. She was blaming it on the connection, but she also doesn't seem to be feeling well. Len has her resting right now, and so I think she'll be leaving us. I don't think she's going to stay with us. I'm hoping she's not, and that Len will keep a close eye on her husband. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Starr, did you want to say something? Did you raise your hand? No? Okay, all right. I thank you very much. So we're going to move on to the orders of the day. We're going to open with Old Business, and I'm going to ask Counselor Starr to please read in item number 2020-174. This is Old Business.
Good evening, this is, thank you. This is Old Business, item 2020-174, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $75,000 from the Set Aside Historic Resources in the Community Preservation Fund for the Phase Two Preservation and Restoration of the Old Colony Courthouse, 3046 Main Street, Barnstable, Massachusetts. It's open to public hearing with a roll call majority vote.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sarah. Sarah. I'll second that. However, Mr. President, I have to recuse myself on this item as I'm a member of Tales of Cape Cod.
Okay, thank you.
Could someone else second that, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Do we have somebody for rationale?
Yes, Lindsay Council is here, as well as Gene Will from Tales of Cape Cod.
Okay. Who would like to speak on that in the rationale? Lindsay?
Yes, Council President Hebert, I can speak to that.
Thank you.
Tales of Cape Cod is seeking approval from the Town Council through the Town Manager for $75,000 in community preservation, historic preservation funds. At the April 27th, 2020 Community Preservation Committee, the eight members present voted unanimously for recommendation to the Town Council. Tales of Cape Cod Inc.'s request for a permanent restoration of the support structure of the first floor in the oldest part of the Old Colonial Courthouse, located at 3046 Main Street, Route 6A, Barnstable Village. This funding request represents a portion of the total project cost of $175,000, with $50,000 in emergency funds awarded by the Massachusetts Preservation Project Funds to address the critical flooring and foundation restoration needed, and $50,000 to be provided by Tales of Cape Cod. The Old Colonial Courthouse is a circa 1763 historically significant building that served as the courthouse for Barnstable County before becoming a Baptist church in 1905, when the L was added along with the bell tower. Tales of Cape Cod acquired the building in 1972 and using funds awarded from Massachusetts Historical Commission and Barnstable Community Preservation Funds, Phase One restoration was completed in June 2019. Recently, a structural engineer identified first-floor structural deficiencies that would need to be addressed prior to holding the 30 to 40 events scheduled from May to October by Tales of Cape Cod and the community. A prioritized architect's report for the building confirmed that repair of the structures below the main assembly space would be required to continue the safe assembly of lodge groups and was listed as the next priority for restoration of the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is open for a public hearing. Sarah, do we have anybody listed for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Gene Will is on. He is from Tales of Cape Cod.
Okay, Gene, if you would present, if you would present for us, we appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I may have missed your comment.
Thank you for being here, and we await your comment.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this application, and I wish to express a word of thanks to the Barnstable CPC for its unanimous support of our application. Sarah, do I have, I have a few slides. Can you put them up? The Old Colonial Courthouse is a contributing structure to the Old Kings Highway National Historic District, and it is listed on the State Register of Historic Buildings. The oldest portion of this building served as the county courthouse for Barnstable County from 1763 until 1833. It is only, it is one of two remaining colonial courthouses in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The next slide. Last fall, Tales of Cape Cod became aware of a structural problem with the first-floor framing of the building. We have worked with coastal engineering and the architectural firm of Brown, Lenquist, Finucchio, and Reber to determine the extent of the problem and to come up with a solution. The findings are that overall, the courthouse appears to be in fair condition, with the exception of the first-floor framing, which is the oldest part of the building, and that framing is in poor condition. Decay and pest damage have led to structural compromise. Unless restored, this area of the building should not be used for assembly space, and care should be taken to limit the number of persons on the floor at any time. This poses a significant problem for Tales of Cape Cod because over 50% of our programming revenue comes from the use of the building. It's also the case that if the building is not restored, its condition will simply continue to deteriorate. The project cost, as Lindsay indicated, is $175,000. Tales of Cape Cod has committed 50. We have, we applied for and were awarded emergency funds under the Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund, and I am here to ask for the balance of $75,000 to secure this project. This is the project. I have a number of other slides that I would like to present that talk about the significance of the building and to describe the multi-year restoration plan that we have in place or that we have undertaken to restore and preserve this building for future generations. The Old Colonial Courthouse is a living example of Cape Cod history. It was built in 1763 as a Georgian building typical of the architecture from Great Britain and in the colonies at that time. When it became a church in 1842, it was remodeled and took on the appearance of a neoclassical building typical of Cape Cod at that time. In 1905, the L was added, the bell tower was added, and it took on the appearance that we know today. Although the appearance of the building has evolved over time, the foundation, the framing, the interior plaster walls are pretty much intact from the original building itself. The next slide. It's located at the corner of Rendezvous Lane and Main Street in Barnstable Village. This was once the commercial center of Barnstable Village. Rendezvous Lane was the primary road that accessed the harbor. Five taverns were at one time located around the courthouse. Three of these taverns or buildings remain today. This was the site of the Liberty Pole constructed before the Revolutionary War. It was at this intersection that was the muster site for soldiers that left Barnstable for the Revolution and the War of 1812. And perhaps most significantly, it was at this site in 1774 that patriots defied the Acts of Parliament and overthrew the British court system in Barnstable County. Next slide. Today, it is the gateway into Barnstable Village, the cultural district, and the commercial shops. Next slide. Tales of Cape Cod identified the need to restore this building back in 2013. We have undertaken a number of tasks to get to the point where we are now. With your help, we completed a historic structure report to assess the current condition of the building. With help from other sources, we completed an architectural survey to understand how the building has evolved over time, what parts of the building are original to the original courthouse. In 2018, we won an award from the Massachusetts Cultural Facilities Fund to do a feasibility study for a capital campaign, to develop a documentary video to present the history and significance of this building to the public, and to engage an architectural firm to assess, to review the interior design of the building and make recommendations for future enhancements based on expected use going forward. We also realized that we had to have a strong viable organization to support this operation. We had to raise significant funds to do it. We have worked, the board has worked diligently since 2013 to build membership, to increase attendance at our program, and to improve the financial standings of the organization. That's indicated in the bottom chart. Next slide, please. In June 2019, we completed the first phase of our restoration project, and this was to replace the asphalt roof with red cedar shingles and restore the bell tower and do a few other additional things, taking the building back closer to its original appearance, which would have been 1905 is the target date to take the building back to that time. Next slide. We're very pleased with the outcome of this. We have received numerous compliments from members of the organization as well as residents on the North Shore that appreciate the improvements that have been made to this building. Next slide. Once we had completed the roof, the natural sequence of events in project restoration is to assess the foundation, the framing, and begin to look at the interior of the building. This is when we uncovered the problem with the first-floor framing, and we engaged coastal engineering to provide us that assessment. Next slide. The recommendations are that we should treat the treat the, have the building inspected and treat it for pests, in particular powder post beetles, before any restoration work is done. The second is that we need to restore the first floor framing underneath the oldest part of the building. Next slide. So this is where we are today. We are seeking funding to stabilize the first floor framing in the oldest part of the building, which will increase the load capacity to current code requirements. This work will involve sistering the floor joists and floor beams, installing a new support beam beneath the balcony bearing wall, which is an interior wall supported by concrete masonry piers, replacing existing unmortared stacked fieldstone piers in the crawl space with concrete masonry piers, and installing a vapor barrier to reduce the amount of moisture in the crawl space and prevent or deter further deterioration from pests. The project timeline is, it would take about four weeks to do this work. We hope to get started in mid-June and complete it by the end of July. In which case, if the pandemic continues to abate and we are allowed to use the building later this summer, we would be in a position to do it. Next slide. This slide is simply a breakout of the construction cost and an identification of the sources of funds. Next slide. We have had the building inspected. We are, at this point, the treatment for powder post beetles is not within the scope of the project for which we are seeking funding. We will fund that ourselves and this work will be done before any restoration work is done on the, in the crawl space. Next slide. I want to give you a sense of the phases of this restoration. Phase one, we started with the roof and the bell tower. Phase two, we are concerned now with the first floor framing and the foundation. Phase three is when we will add, make an addition to the building, add handicapped restrooms, making it fully handicapped accessible. We will also increase or upgrade electrical and water services to the building. In phase four, we will do interior restoration. We will upgrade the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. Phase five is a potential conversion of a second floor apartment into office space for the organization. The chart at the bottom is intended to indicate that the initial phases of this project are really meant to secure the existing structure. The later phases, phases three, four, and five are meant to enhance the building to increase its flexibility and its usefulness to the community. Final slide, please. Final slide provides an overview of the cost associated with this full restoration project. The total bill is estimated to be over two million dollars. The largest component of this, or largest cost base, would be the third phase where we add on to the building and we provide handicapped restrooms. I want to emphasize, if you look in the far right-hand column, that according to our projections and our intentions, over seventy percent of this restoration work will be funded by Tales of Cape Cod through retained earnings from our programming and through a capital campaign. We estimate that this capital campaign will probably last over a ten, fifteen-year period. It will come in different phases to support the different operations. Clearly, we cannot do this work until we have the money to do it. We will look to outside funding for about thirty percent of the cost of this. And we would like and hope to be able to come back to Barnstable CPC and the town of Barnstable for its support as well as the state through the Massachusetts Historic Commission and the Preservation Projects Fund. We will also seek other grants, which we have been successful in raising for smaller projects. That concludes the slides that I have prepared. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I must ask Sarah if we have anybody else waiting for public comment.
No other public comment at this time.
Thank you. Lynn Poyant, anybody else?
There's no phone calls. Thank you.
I thank you very much. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make a couple of points in support of this project. So as you know, I'm liaison to the CPC committee. Tales of Cape Cod has come to us, before us, a number of times over the last several months, actually year. And, and we kept coming back to them with, you know, we need a little bit, we need more information. We need a full assessment. And they have done yeoman's work in doing everything that the committee has asked them. I would say that, you know, there are three major reasons to support this project. Fundamentally, this is an incredibly significant historic building. And there's only, this is one of two that are like it in the entire Commonwealth. So it is arguably one of the most important buildings on Cape Cod. The second is that the current board and the leadership of Tales has done an excellent job in responding to the requests of the committee and on their own volition as well to have an engineer look at the building, have a full-scale assessment of the building, develop a multi-phase restoration plan or maintenance plan, if you will, and also looking at the development work, the fundraising piece that will have to coincide with this. And as you saw, over time, the ask for CPC will be, you know, roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But it's only a portion of a much larger amount that is needed to do this work. So to that point, I just want to say they've also done an excellent job in securing additional outside funding as well as securing funding for, from their supporter base. And they know that in order to make this project successful long-term, they're going to have to continue that kind of effort. So, but for the here and now, you know, this particular project is absolutely fundamental to keeping the doors open. This isn't a coupla. This isn't fancy windows. This is about making the building structurally sound so that people can go back into the building and enjoy all of the programming that happens within. So I hope you'll all support it. It's a great project. It's an important building. It's an important piece of our identity. And, and I will be supporting it wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors would like to make any comments? Okay, we have Counselor Neary, please. Counselor Neary. Counselor Neary.
Gotcha. Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Counselor Beedenbender. Lindsay and Jean, it's great to see a project like this come forward. I look at the increase in membership and the increase in program participation and, and and obviously revenue is coming in. So you've done a fantastic job and I think that that shows that this is a viable, viable project and it should be funded and it should be funded going forward. Thank you so much for bringing it up to us. I appreciate it.
Any other counselors at this point? Counselor Thank you. Counselor Snap, please. Counselor Snap.
Thank you, Mr. President. Definitely by the high quality of the presentation, I know that this organization is really serious about not only restoring this very valuable asset in our community, but also in increasing the programming. I've enjoyed some programming there before and I would love to see it expand so that more people can take, take advantage of it. Just two, like, number crunching questions. What was the Community Preservation Fund commitment in phase one? And then the second question is more regarding the historic preservation amount. It says that we have a balance of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred eleven. Would the seventy-five thousand go against that? And I know that we'll be getting a reallocation or a new allocation for the next fiscal year, so that probably will bump up again.
I can answer the first of those questions. The Community Preservation Fund committed eighty-five thousand dollars to phase one project. And I believe the total cost of that project was one hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Was it, did Lindsay want to respond to the rest of the question? Was there another question?
Yeah, the second part of that was the Community Preservation Fund and this will be coming out of the remaining balance of that fund for this year.
Thank you. If there are no other
Counselor Bogan, you had your hand up earlier. Did you have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Lowell. And I changed my mind.
Move the question.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
First, we have a second. Thank you very much. Madam, Madam Clerk, a roll call on this, please.
Certainly. Counselors, Bogan? I'm sorry.
You muted, Dave.
There you go.
There you go. Yes.
Cullen? Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette? Oh, I'm sorry, refused. Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes, to a jewel that is a jewel in the crown of the town of Barnstable.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Counselor Snap.
She's, she's, she's not unmuted yet.
You can use your
Yes.
Yes, okay. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes, and congratulations.
Thank you. That's good. Passes.
Thank you very much.
Point of information that the motion we were voting on was to move the question. So we may need to do another roll call for the actual vote.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, so let's, let's be clear about this. We're doing
They're voting on the item now.
Yes, and, and that item number, can we read that item number again? This is, this is a vote on item number twenty twenty dash one seven four. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Absolutely. Counselors, Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes, again.
Bogan?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes.
Thank you. And it not only passes, we, unanimous, twelve, twelve yeses and one abstaining.
Eleven yeses.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank
Thank you.
All right, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I must, I must say, I can't believe how many emails, notifications, letters came in in support of the project. And nothing negative. Everything was positive. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I will, I will now entertain a motion to refer the Town Council orders twenty twenty dash one four five through twenty twenty dash one seven zero as written, which are the appropriation orders for the FY twenty-one operating budget for all town departments, including the Barnstable Municipal Airport Enterprise Fund, the Barnstable Public School, the Barnstable Police Department, the Planning and Development Department, the Community Services Department, the Gulf Cross Enterprise Fund, the Hyannis Youth and Community Enterprise Fund, the Marine and Environmental Affairs Department, the Marina Enterprise Fund, the Sandy Net Enterprise Fund, the Licensing Department, the Inspection Service Services Department, the Public Works Department, the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund, the Water Supply Enterprise Fund, the Town Council, the Town Manager, the Public Educational and Government Access Channel Enterprise Fund, the Administrative Services Department, the Town Council Reserve Fund, the Other General Fund Requirements Budget, the Community Preservation Fund Administrative Expenses and FY twenty twenty-one Program Set Aside, the Community Preservation Fund Debt Service Budget, the Sewer Construction and Private Way Improvement Fund Debt Service Budget, and the FY twenty twenty-one Revolving Fund Spending Reauthorization Limit to individual public hearings to be held on each order on June fourth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Again.
We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote, roll, roll call by majority vote on this motion. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
That's twelve yeses. It passes.
Thank you very much. I would now ask Counselor Dagwan to please read into the record item number twenty twenty dash one seven five.
Yes, Mr. President. Open for a public hearing on six four twenty twenty. It would be item twenty twenty one seven five. An appropriation and loan order in the amount of one million two hundred thousand dollars for the pump station rehabilitation program.
Do the second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so this, this is for referral to a public hearing on June fourth on item number twenty twenty dash one seven five. I have a I'll indicate a motion for a vote to refer this to a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So this, yes.
This would be
It's a roll call, right? Yes. Madam Clerk?
Counselors? Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
And Dagwan?
Yes.
That would be twelve yes.
Thank you very much. I would now ask Counselor Bogan to please I would now ask Counselor Bogan to please read into the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-six for first read and then referral to a second reading on June fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-six is new business. This is a request to amend section two forty-one dash forty-seven point one zero of the Barnstable Administrative Code to remove the Communications Division from the Community Services Department by amending the administrative code to delete the communications section in its entirety. This is a first read and would be referred to a second reading on June fourth.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first, we have a second. So this is a, a roll call vote for item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-six to refer to a public hearing on June fourth. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
And Rap Grissette?
Yes.
That would be twelve yeses.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify, you're not referring it to a public hearing. It's just going to a second read.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would now ask Counselor Schnapp, please, to read into the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, referred to a public hearing on June fourth, twenty-twenty. Item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-seven. Appropriation and transfer order of seventy-five thousand dollars to fund recyclable disposal at the Solid Waste Division of the Department of Public Works.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. I would like to do a, a roll call vote right now on referring this to a public hearing. Item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-seven. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
That is twelve yeses.
Thank you. I would ask Counselor Leveque to please read into the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-eight. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund municipal solid waste disposal at the Solid Waste Division of the Department of Public Works. And this is new business, referring to a public hearing, June fourth, two thousand twenty, as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first, we have a second. This is for item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-eight. Referring to a public hearing on oh-six-oh-four. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Neary?
Sorry, yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
That's twelve yeses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is, I would ask now for Counselor Shaughnessy, please, to, to read into the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-nine.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is new business, which may be acted on. This is item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-nine. Acceptance of a community compact grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office for Administration and Finance for the development of an age-friendly action plan.
Second.
And I believe Madeline Noonan is here to speak with us about the rationale.
Thank you. So we have, we have a second. And is Madeline here?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Counselor Hebert, Council President, Council Vice President, members of the Town Council. I hope you're all well. I'm very excited to be here with you to let you know that this funding, twenty-five thousand dollars, through the State Community Compact and through the Division of Local Services, will allow us to move forward with the development of our age-friendly action plan for the town of Barnstable. And this will continue the process that we started in two thousand and fifteen when we conducted a comprehensive community needs assessment for our fifty-plus population. And it's going to allow us to move forward with planning for the needs of our older adult population through the eight domains of age-friendly work. And we're very excited with this funding to be able to engage with our community and working with UMass Boston's Gerontology Institute.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions from Mrs. Noonan? All right, seeing, seeing none.
Mr. President, I'd, I'd move that we vote on item twenty-twenty-one-seventy-nine.
We have a first, a second?
Again.
Thank you very much. Mad, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, roll call vote on item number twenty-twenty dash one-seven-nine, please.
Counselors, Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
That is twelve yeses.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would now ask Counselor Schnapp to please read in to the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-eight-zero, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business that may be acted upon. Item number twenty-twenty dash one-eighty. Acceptance of grant in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office for Administration and Finance for community engagement efforts in support of zoning changes to allow for increased density and housing opportunities in a manner that is consistent with neighborhood character and supportive of aging in community.
Second.
Thank you very much. I believe that we have Elizabeth Jenkins here that might give us the rationale here, please.
Good evening, President Hebert. I am here. I, I am not able to share my video. It says the host has stopped my video. So if the host would be so kind, oh, as to allow me to share my video. Excellent. Thank you, Counselors. President Hebert, good evening, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Following on Madeline's grant acceptance, the town of Barnstable has established through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts DLS Community Compact Best Practice Program, housing as one of our best practices, specifically zoning changes to allow for increased density and housing opportunities in a manner consistent with neighborhood character and supportive of aging in the community. Counselors know that Staff and Planning and Development has been hard at work on redrafting provisions in the Hyannis Village zoning districts to, in fact, accomplish just that, allow for increased density and more streamlined permitting for multifamily development. This grant of five thousand dollars would be in support of community engagement around that process. Certainly, we're in a time where we must be creative with our engagement and outreach. And again, this money would be in support of that project and that best practice. Happy to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very, very much. Any counselors, any comment or questions to Elizabeth Jenkins? Seeing?
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item twenty-twenty-one-eight-zero, please.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote on item number twenty-twenty dash one-eight-zero.
Thank you. Counselors, Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
That's twelve yeses.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Counselor Stein Hilber to please read into the record item number twenty-twenty dash one-eight-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to open the public hearing on item twenty-twenty dash one-eight-one. Authorizing submission of Chapter H Amendment Application to Cape Cod Commission to include wholesale uses in the industrial service and trade area, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. We have anyone to speak to the rationale for the town?
I will speak to the rationale, President Hebert, again, Elizabeth Jenkins.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Cape Cod Commission Regulations provide municipalities with a series of tools to modify the thresholds that trigger development projects to fall under the commission's review. That is specifically, they require review as developments of regional impact. By modifying the DRI thresholds, this allows the Cape Cod Commission and the town to direct new growth and investment into appropriate areas, areas that are, that are served by adequate infrastructure and away from areas with sensitive natural or historic resources. So-called Chapter H of the Cape Cod Commission Regulations allows for the raising or lowering of DRI thresholds if certain conditions are met. In April of two thousand nine, the Cape Cod Commission approved that the town's Chapter H application that resulted in an increase of thresholds for commercial development in and around the Route one thirty-two Regional Commercial Center to twenty thousand square feet, up from ten thousand square feet. In addition, in the area that we refer to as the industrial service and trade area, DRI thresholds were raised to forty thousand square feet, up from ten thousand square feet, but only for two specific uses, research and development uses and light manufacturing. I'll note that the town's application was the first Chapter H application that was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission by a municipality on Cape Cod. And for this reason, our ask to the commission was moderated in, in recognition of that. Tonight's request in front of the council is to explain, expand the applicability of the threshold relief to a third category of use in that industrial service and trade area. That use is wholesale use. We feel wholesale uses are consistent with the type of clean and light industrial uses that are currently present in the area today. We believe that this request is logical and sensitive and sensible and supports our greater economic objectives and our local comprehensive plan goals. I do think it's fair to note that the timing of this request will have a particular advantage to one business, specifically CAM. Some of you may know that CAM is faced with being displaced from their current location as a result of the mass DOT upgrade to the Armith Road and Route twenty-eight intersection. We very much value this business in our community and the jobs that it provides, and we're happy to be able to support their relocation within the town of Barnstable with this application. On May eleventh, the Planning Board unanimously recommended in favor to support this application. And should the council choose to support it tonight, it would be forwarded to the Cape Cod Commission for a consideration and a vote. I'd be, I do have a map of the industrial service and trade area. If you would like me to screen share, otherwise I would be happy to, to answer any question.
All the counselors did receive it in the agenda in terms of the map, but if the counselors would allow me to, let's put it up on screen if we could, just so that the public, any public watching would see what we're talking about.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hebert, I wasn't aware that Elizabeth was hoping to share her screen. I did not make her co-host before I put her in the breakout room, so she cannot share her screen at this time.
I can see it.
Oh, thank you. Okay, oh, you're, you're seeing on your screen, okay. But thank you very much. Sorry about that, Sarah. And thank you, Elizabeth, for your presentation. And I think you were very clear on what it is that we're accomplishing here.
Sarah, and I will note that is, that application is available on the Planning and Development website as well as the Planning Board website, should any member of the public wish to view it. I do also believe it was included in the council agenda.
It was, definitely was, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. And so now we're going to open it to a public hearing. And so, Sarah, do you have anybody in waiting?
Yes, Attorney Kenny is on for public comment.
Thank you very much. Attorney Kenny, please.
He's been waiting since the beginning of the meeting, so it might take him a second to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, well, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I was trying to get it to unmute.
Welcome to the club.
I, I represent both the, the land, the landowner of the site that CAM wants to move to as well as CAM in connection with their project. And we kind of initiated this process. And when we first started it, I staff made it very clear to us that this couldn't be a, a, an amendment just for CAM, but it had to be a sound policy decision. That was made clear to us both with meetings with town staff as well as meetings with the Cape Cod Commission. We've had, have had preliminary meetings with them. If you pass this tonight, this has to go to a full public hearing before the Cape Cod Commission as well. But they made it clear to us that it had to be a sound public policy decision and be supported by the comprehensive plan, et cetera. I believe it does, as Elizabeth just stated. Both as a resident and as an attorney representing the landowner and a, the project, a, a, a future project applicant, I support this. And thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank, thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for being with us for the entire evening. That's a woman's task. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did any other members of the staff? Want to talk about this? Lynn, is there anybody in waiting on, on the phone?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no calls for the public hearing.
Thank you very, very much. Sarah, anybody else in queue?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions, comments? Counselor Starr, please.
Good evening.
Counselor Starr?
Yes. So, Ms. Jenkins, I'm wondering what, what other companies besides, besides this one would fit into that category as a wholesale? And can you give me a broader, broader sense of what this would allow?
Sure, so we have, we have defined wholesale uses as those companies that provide, provide products, but not directly to the consumer. You know, there, there may be companies currently in the park that qualify as that definition. I know there are a number of companies, again, in the industrial service and trade area today that, for example, provide building materials or, or supplies to, 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 directly to contractors or wholesale users. Largely, the, the Chapter H application, or the Chapter H program acts as an incentive to attract new investment into the area, sending a message to our business community that this is a location where we feel that these land uses are appropriately located. And that's giving me the, them the advantage of that lesser threshold relief. I will note that I don't believe that this, that this category of land use would apply to retailers who, who sort of market themselves with a wholesale component. So for example, BJ's. We talk about it as a wholesaler, but really they're, they're providing products directly to the consumer. So I would not, I would not interpret this as being applicable, applicable to a category of use such as a BJ's. So, I would not interpret this as being applicable to a category of use such as a BJ's.
So, just to follow up, it says that ancillary retail sales are allowed? So, like, there is some retail allowed?
Correct. Subordinate to a primary use as wholesale.
Sort of like a BJ's?
I would consider, and I think we would, I think our consensus would be that the majority of BJ's business is direct to consumer. Consumers walk in and buy products in bulk. It's not wholesale, which in fact is direct to a third party, not to a consumer.
So, would products be allowed in this category?
I would have to go through their components of use to make that designation. But again, I think they, my understanding of their business model is, yes, they sell largely to contractors and not to the general public, so it's possible that they could qualify as a wholesaler.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe...
Counselor Hebert, if I may, John Grolton from CAM came on, so he's here to answer any questions, or I don't know if he has any public comment to give at this time.
Okay. Why don't we give John an opportunity to come on, please?
Hi, Paul, and town counselors, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. As you know, this is, I'm going to be speaking strictly for CAM and CAM's interests. I do believe personally that the Chapter H designation amendment would be good overall for the town. It should allow for greater economic development in that area. As for CAM and our concerns, we need a home. We need a new home. The state has given us until April 1st, excuse me, May 1st, 2021, at which time we will have to vacate. And as you know, there is not an awful lot of land that's available to develop a building to replace the building that we currently have, and so that's our interest. There's 60 jobs associated with the company, and a lot of families that rely on that. So, I just ask that you take that in consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, and thank you for trying to stay with us in Barnstable. We appreciate that, believe me. Thank you.
Barnstable's our home. We've been here for 35 years.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I believe, did Counselor Shaughnessy have her hand up?
Thank you, President Hebert. I just wanted to say that I fully support this. I spoke with Erin Cox this week from CAM, and she talked to me about, they've been diligently working on trying to find a location. She talked to me about the difficulty of that. And the truth is, with the timeline that's essentially less than a year out, with permitting and all the other hurdles that they're going to need to jump through, you know, we're going to put them in a real jam between a rock and a hard place if we don't move on this for them. Also, and I can't tell from looking at the map, my assumption is that, for example, Shepley's is located in the red zone. I can't tell if BJ's is in or out or on the border, but, I mean, I would say CAM's business, at least in terms of retail wholesale, is probably right in line with what Shepley does. And I'd also just like to throw out again, they're a great company, they give back a great deal to the community, and again, I don't think this is the only business that will be benefited. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Counselor Schnapp, please. Counselor Schnapp?
Thank you, Mr. President. Elizabeth, could you clarify, does this apply to both the red and blue zones on the map? Or just the red zone?
This applies only to the red zone. So, it would, again, apply only the, the benefit of the threshold relief would apply only to light manufacturing, research and development, and wholesale uses within the red zone.
Could you explain what the reservations were about not including wholesale at the original application?
I don't think there were reservations. The way we put together our initial application was, we modeled it after the one previous decision, Chapter H decision that had come before the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission staff had actually prepared a decision on behalf of several Cape towns to provide threshold relief in some other industrial areas. So, that was the genesis of where those two land uses came from and that approach came from. And again, we saw this in the beginning as a sort of a small step forward, knowing that we were the first municipality to have to go through the process of justifying the raised thresholds. So, we were just, you know, it was our approach to, again, act cautiously in making that initial request and sort of build on the existing Chapter H decision that was in place that, again, had been put forth by the Commission. But to echo Attorney Kenny's comments, we feel that wholesale use in this area is very appropriate, again, aligned with our economic development objectives, and I have no reservations extending those benefits to all businesses and to all parcels within this area.
Thank you very much. Any other Counselors?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move to vote on item 2020-181. Please.
Second. We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, it's going to be a roll call, majority vote on item number 2020-181, please.
Thank you. Counselors, Starr?
Yes.
Steinhillberg?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
100% yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you for our speakers on this item. I would now ask Counselor Starr to please read into the record item number 2020-182.
You're muted, Counselor Starr.
I got to find it. This is new business, may be acted upon with a roll call majority. This is 2020-182, resolve recommending to the Great and General Court of the Commonwealth the approval of House Bill HD 5044 to authorize the town of Barnstable to grant easements of about 7,800 square feet, more or less, in West Barnstable to the N-Star Electric Company doing business with Eversource Energy.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Do we have anyone to speak on this?
Assistant Attorney McGoughlin will speak to it, sir.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Council President and members of the Council. The town of Barnstable and Eversource have entered into a settlement agreement regarding realigning and expanding an existing easement, a long-existing easement, I should point out, dating back to the 1930s, to accommodate placement of a new overhead power line as part of Eversource's Mid-Cape Reliability Project. The town and Eversource reached a settlement agreement in 2019 that included conveying an easement to Eversource so as to expand an existing easement in West Barnstable to a width of 185 feet. The purpose of doing so was to allow Eversource to meet required separation lines from nearby sidelines of the easement. The town council approved the granting of this easement as item number 2019-199 a year ago in May of 2019. Eversource now seeks Article 97 approval for this transaction from the legislature. Important to note that a primary consideration for these amendments, Eversource has agreed at its own expense to retrofit its existing substation in Independence Park by upgrading containment vessels and related equipment within the substation in order to fully contain any releases of petroleum-based products, including transformer cooling fluids known as dielectric fluids. These actions will help protect the town's public water supplies, which are directly downgradient from Eversource's substation. I should also note that this property is under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission, which voted last year to support the 2019 item before the Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions or comments? Counselor Starr, please.
Mr. McGoughlin, I wasn't here last year. So, what, the easement is 100, wants to be 185 feet wide?
That is correct.
What is it now?
In the area, for almost all of its length, it is 185 feet. Surveys here, what's actually happened is, as they proposed to put a new transmission line down through the existing easement, running from point A right about the sandwich line to point B, slightly inside of the town of Barnstable town line. To do that, point A to point B, the overhead line would transgress outside of the existing easement sideline. And so, for a couple of hundred, I don't have the exact dimensions, there is a plan on file with the town. It's a couple of hundred, at least a couple hundred feet long, and about five or 10 feet wide. So, it's a very small incursion outside of the existing lines, but, and really negligible in the scheme of things out there. It's all conservation lands and has been or will remain, so this is an easement only, not a conveyance of a fee.
Okay. I couldn't find it on the map anywhere, but thank you.
There are, we do have those on file with the town clerk from last year.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other Counselor comments or questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move and vote on item 2020-182.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, this will be a roll call on item number 2020-182, please.
Thank you. Counselors, Steinhillberg?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask now that Counselor Neary would kindly read into the record item number 2020-183, please. Counselor Neary?
Pull it up, yeah.
Page 54 of the agenda.
This is new business, it's a first reading, referring to a second reading on 6/4/2020. It's item number 2020-183. Appointments to a board, committee, or commission that the town council appoints upon individuals from multi-member board, committee, commission, land acquisition, and preservation committee, Elizabeth Lewis of West Barnstable, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2023, as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second to refer to a second reading on June 4th. Item number 2020-183. I would ask Madam Clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark? I'm sorry. Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr? Steinhillberg?
Yes.
That would be 12 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would now ask Counselor Levek to read into the record item number 2020-184.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, first reading, referring this to a second reading, June 4th, 2020. This is item number 2020-184. This is reappointments to a board, committee, commission, as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. I would ask for a vote on this item. Madam Clerk, roll call vote of item number 2020-184, please.
Counselors, Bogan?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp? Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhillberg?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, Madam Clerk. So, this concludes the orders of the day. Our next regular scheduled meeting is October 4th, 2020.
I think you mean June.
What did I say?
Not October.
October, that's a good month, but we're not going to wait that long. It'll be, thank you very much for that correction, June 4th, 2020. So, this is good. I'm going to leave you all laughing. Thank you very, very much. I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Some of...
Second.
A first and a second. Do we need to do a roll call? Madam Clerk, I guess so.
Yes, yes, you do.
Let's do it. Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhillberg?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
And yes.
Woo-hoo! 12 yes.
Thank you, David.
We thank you all, and we wish you all a good night.
Good night, everyone.